All right. Alive.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. Happy New Year, everyone. If we could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for her.
Okay. So, we only have two items on the agenda tonight, and tonight was really meant to be dedicated strictly to Circuit Breaker, but as you all know, there's quite a bit going on with COVID. So Superintendent is going to provide a brief update on kind of where we're at before we jump into Circuit Breaker. So Jeff, it's all yours.
Thanks, Chris. So I think your words were best when I was going to provide the overview, like it's bad. COVID's pretty bad right now. I had a meeting with Commissioner today at 3:00, and I'll tell you what he had to say in a few minutes, but just to give you a little bit of a rundown where we are with students and staff.
So just hold on. As a point of order from Mr. Boyce, thank you very much. We do have three folks on the phone tonight. So it's Michael Jones, Fred Small, and Michelle Bojolay. And so if we do take any votes tonight, they will need to be roll call votes. So sorry for the interruption.
No worries.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for keeping us in line. Thank you. Sorry.
So, no worries at all. So just as far as where we're at with attendance this week, as a general overview, the high school has 1,095 students in it. On January 4th, we had 114 students out. On the 5th, today, we had 201 students out. Now, it could be for a variety of reasons, COVID-related, it could be illness, parents could be keeping their kids home, some people could be on vacation. I know of a few students that are stuck overseas because they tested positive overseas and couldn't get back. Whitman Middle School, 514 students, 87 out yesterday, 87 out today. Preschool, 99, 7 out, and then 17 out. Conley, 493, 94 out, and then 82. Duval, 426, 61 and 63. Indian Head, 498, 54 and 53. And then Hanson Middle School, 459, 77 and 70. As far as staff, I have 540 active staff members. That excludes coaches and after-school program staff. So that staff excludes bus drivers as well, they don't work for us. So that's cafeteria, that's maintenance facilities, secretaries, principals, teachers, paras, OTPT, all those folks. Monday, we had 93 staff out. Tuesday, 107, and Wednesday, 108. Again, that's not all COVID-related. People are on bereavement, people are on vacation. I had 40 teachers out today. I counted up, 40 actual teachers were out today. 28 looked like they were from COVID. And that could be because they're a close contact, or they're quarantining, or they tested positive. Backing up just a little bit, a lot of hubbub last week on vacation week from DESI with masks, KN95 masks came out. From the Commissioner's meeting today, we received 15,000 masks for our teachers. From the Commissioner's meeting today, our masks were not the masks that were MIT certified. So the mask from MIT went somewhere else in the state. So there's some Boston Globe articles, the efficacy of the KN95 masks from MIT certified and the other ones. We've still offered all the masks to our teachers. They're in the principal's offices if they choose to take them. The other thing that came out last week was testing for teachers. It was rolled out on Wednesday. We were supposed to pick up, George, how many test kits? 7, $690?
We're supposed to pick up 730, and we got, and that changed to the lower.
So we were supposed to pick up 700, what George said, test kits that contained two tests per. They split that in half, and we were able to pick that up on Saturday morning. Ernie went and picked them up. When they were delivered, George and a few other central office staff members then divided the test kits in half, so each staff member could have at least one test to pick up on Sunday. We ran an open house here from 9 to 12 on Sunday. 168 staff members picked up a test, and the gist of the test was to make sure that you are safe to come back to school. We have now circulated those tests into our nurses' offices for teachers, so if a teacher comes to school and they feel like they're ill, they can test here without having to go, and we have that for them. We did not distribute all our tests to the teachers. We met with the association yesterday and let them know that. That's where we're at. The Commissioner's message today was, let me do my notes. They're supposed to decide on the mask mandate, which is over on January 15th. He said a decision will come out early next week. We are still not allowed to take a remote day. He said use a snow day if you can't staff your school or you staff your building. He is not waiving excess snow days yet. So he has not considered the fact that we lost three days in October yet, and there's a potential for snow on Friday. He kind of hedged that a little bit when he said use your snow days, and we can't take them away yet. It's still early. So that's where we are. We are, we are working, teachers, paras, everybody's putting in as much as they can to keep kids in school. We all know it's good to keep kids in school. We did receive a message from a doctor on our call today saying it's important for kids to be in school for their own mental health and to make sure that we keep our hospitals running, because 35% of people that work in hospitals have kids, and they rely on their kids going to school so they can go to work. So we got a lot of praise from the doctor for keeping schools open. I can't say enough for our teachers who are working really hard covering and covering, our parents who are covering, everybody's picking up. You saw how many people are out. When you have maintenance people out, somebody's doing double duty. When you have cafeteria people doing double duty, I have two principals and two assistant principals out. Everybody's picking up the slack, so I can't say enough about that. And I did want to say shout out to operations and the central office staff members for working Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this week, trying to get the test kits out, trying to do everything we can to make sure we opened on Monday as safe as possible with as many supplies for our staff as possible. Where we go now, I think it's a wait and see. I did have a conference call with people on the South Shore. Superintendents, we're all in the same boat. We're looking at Friday as a potential snow day if it snows. So I want to shout out, we're watching the weather, folks. We're watching out there. Tell your kids, I will let you know as soon as I can, depending on the track of the storm. You know, I've been in communication before. Try to get things out as early on Thursday night as possible so you're not waking up in the morning and getting a phone call. That's what I have for COVID, and that's why I threw in a little bit of a snow piece.
Any questions on COVID before we jump in?
I just have one.
Yeah?
Do the teachers, are they aware that the masks are not the MIT certified ones?
Not yet. They will tomorrow morning. The call was over at 3:30 today.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom?
Quick clarification, you said you didn't distribute all the tests to the teachers. I just want to make sure that that's because you had enough tests for those who wanted them. So anyone who wanted a test?
On Sunday, on Sunday, when they wanted a test, we gave them to them. And what our statement to the association was, now they have them here, so they're coming to work, they can take their test here, instead of using one of the test and stay tests that we have.
And just a comment on the staff, what you mentioned, you know, they're all pitching in and helping out, and that's obviously so very appreciated. I worry about the breaking point, right? And do you, I don't know, can you speak to maybe a threshold of where, when do you not have enough coverage to keep students learning and safety? And, you know, that topic comes up.
I think it's, it's, it's building specific, because I think high school here, we can utilize spaces better than a fourth or, if I lose four fourth grade classrooms at Indian Head, I don't know if I have coverage. And so that's a, as soon as staff know they might not be out, they need to contact the principal, the principal contacts us, and we make that decision. George, did you want to have a comment on that quickly? And then, yeah, sorry.
At this point in time, we have not, at this point in time, we have not had to combine classes or groups of students in order for coverage. So we're still maintaining the staff that we have. I will say that at some schools, we've already had to cancel some meetings that were planned because the people are supposed to be in the meetings and out covering somewhere else. We did stall our power blocks, which are our elementary school support blocks, and we contain them to the homeroom. We're not mixing those students at this point, just because as we enter into our second phase of assessments, we also put it off a week because of staff shortages is so difficult. But we have not had to group, large groups of students, let's say, in the cafeteria or something like that.
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
George, I hope this wasn't something that you covered, I just couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. Have we been able to get substitute teachers while our teaching staff is out? Is that a rarity such as being a problem?
It's a major problem.
It's a major problem, and we do not, we do not have subs, and some of the college students who came back to sub, four of them currently have COVID. So our small force is finding difficulty. We have probably, you know, a dozen dedicated substitute teachers who are working every single day. We have some, we have some funds set aside for building subs in this time, but we just don't have the people who are available in order to do it. So yes, substitutes are a major problem also.
And just on that, and I forgot, transportation is an issue. We've been trying to communicate with parents. We have a lack of bus drivers anyway, and now we have lack of substitute bus drivers. So Karen Villanueva has had to work on combining routes and doing the best she can, and sometimes routes are delayed or there's a secondary pickup. But parents have been extremely patient, and I hope that patience continues. I don't see light yet. And that busing issue, it's across towns, because I get a notification from Pembroke every day that buses, busing is an issue. So it's not just us.
Okay.
And one quick follow-up on the KN95s. It was my understanding, and I could be totally wrong because my guess is very foggy, the difference between the MIT certified and the plain old mask is that it just hasn't been certified for medical use, but it is still a KN95 mask.
I believe that's correct, Fred.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else on the phone? Michelle, Mike, you're good?
Yeah, I have a question, Sharon.
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, as just recovered, I apologize, but I know at the Hanson Middle School, they rearranged the cafeteria to make sure that the kids are six feet apart. So I'm not sure if they're planning on doing that at high school or the other schools, or any precautions being taken for those times that the kids are together on the map.
So at this point in time, Dr. Jones had a all-school meeting, I guess you'd say, over the intercom, to really try to solidify the fact that if we have to have contact tracing, we will. We went so far as to say that every student, when they're not eating, needs to now put on their masks, as opposed to not, that we used to sort of not have to mask for lunch. The schools that can physically distance, they did, because they were able to bring in, like I know at Hanson Middle School, they were able to bring in some folding tables, so they're able to go sort of in like the zigzag pattern that I know that the Conley School did. The high school is still looking into it. The number one thing we would do at the high school if we had to was to go back to desks, because the problem is there are so many round tables. Last year, we had some extra desks, because if you remember, we had some active discussions about CARES money and things like that, so we were able to get some extra desks, and we also borrowed 250 of them from Stone Hill College. Right now, we're still gathering, where would the desks be if we had to remove all the tables at the high school? We haven't got there yet, but we are in the planning stages of if this, if this keeps up, we will go back to desks at the high school, because that's the only, with the size and the numbers of their lunch shifts, that's the only thing we have. At the elementary schools, they run five lunch shifts. At the middle schools, they run three, and they have less numbers, so we're able to try to spread people out easier.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay. And we'll have this on the agenda, probably as the first item next Wednesday as well. Unfortunately, not something that we'll probably soon stop talking about, so. All right. So as we dive into Circuit Breaker, I just wanted to kind of frame a couple things up. So really, this is the primary agenda item for tonight. I think the question, one of the first questions is how did we get here? And of late, there have been a number of questions and concerns that have come up concerning Circuit Breaker. This was first discussed in our November meeting, and the administration has been working to gather information needed on Circuit Breaker. That process has been delayed a couple times just from folks being out, which we're continually dealing with. Chris Scriven and I met with administration in an attempt to try and ask questions that we thought needed to be addressed. So as the committee knows and appreciates, we're not the only folks charged with that. That is something that the committee needs to do, and it would be inappropriate for just us to do that. And so what we've attempted to do tonight is make sure that we lay out all the questions that have been put forth up to this point, and then share those answers publicly. We can have follow-up questions as we go. So for everyone that's here tonight, there should be sufficient handouts. If you don't have one, please grab one. You'll see the list of questions. If there is a question that we're providing an answer to, and someone on the committee or someone here has a follow-up, please ask. I would just ask you if you all could please take a moment to look at the questions, because the questions that we put together do have a little bit of a flow to them. So what we're trying to avoid is, on question one, someone asks a very specific question that is literally question five, right? So I think we'll try, Chris, Jeff, John, John, myself, if that comes up, it's not that it's an invaluable question, we're just going to try and do this in an organized fashion as we can. I think the thing that I've discovered is a lot of this material is a little dense, it's a little fixed, it can be complex at times. And so really, the main objective for tonight's meeting is to try and get everyone to the same place of understanding. Other than that, I think the school committee has the materials. For those that are watching at home, if you want to follow along as we go, the materials are posted on the website. So if you go on the Whitman-Hanson homepage and you click on District News, there's a section that says Updates and Information from Superintendent Simonak. All the materials that we're going to cover have, and all the materials the folks have in their packets are on the website. So if you either want to watch this at a subsequent time, or you're watching this live, you should be able to follow along as we go. At the conclusion of this meeting, it's really going to be the charge of the school committee to determine what next steps we take. And with all that being said, I think that's really what I wanted to cover. I'll turn it over to Jeff and team, and we'll go question by question here.
Yep. Thanks, Chris. So we've worked extensively, I think, John Stanbrook, at one point in a budget subcommittee meeting, mentioned a change in how we were going to utilize Circuit Breaker funds in the FY '23 budget. And he brought it up at that subcommittee meeting, and from that, more questions evolved about what we have done in the past, what we are going to do in the future, what past practices we've used that I've learned now probably aren't best past practice, and trying to figure out how we do this moving forward, to make sure that we can adequately, this committee here has a full understanding of this revenue source or reimbursement source of Circuit Breaker. So tonight, I want to talk about the questions that were asked, and I feel free to ask more. I just want to be open and honest that I might not have a specific answer, so I'm not trying to brush it off. We will answer that at either a subsequent meeting, or a phone call, or an email. But if you ask a specific, I don't want to give you misinformation or a guess that I have. There are some questions in here that I can answer pretty honestly, that I might not know the answer to, or it's been in the past. So please bear with me. I want to be as transparent, honest, and efficient as I can today to the public, to the committee owning past practice or past performance that might, should improve, that we haven't done in the past. I'm a person who has followed past practice for a while, and maybe, again, that might not have been the best. I do want to thank Mr. Tuffy for coming out of retirement for the fourth time and being here tonight. He's put in a lot of hours trying to figure this out with us. We are a team. I want to thank Mr. Stanbrook. I think he put together a well-thought-out packet of materials. I think John, in this role right here, is extremely efficient and is continually finding some things of how we can improve as a district, how his office can improve, and how we can improve communication with the school committee and with the towns, so that we don't have these problems in the future. Frankly, this is a problem that I want to resolve and make sure that we have everything answered as effectively as possible. And it's going to lie with the school committee during budget time, as we get into this, how you want to proceed. There are some conflicting thoughts out there in the community and even within the school committee on how to use Circuit Breaker. There's best practice, and what I found from MASC, from my colleagues, from DESI, there is no golden rule. People do it differently. I think what my charge will be with this committee going forward is to communicate those options as best I can, to make sure you have the entire ball, I'm trying to think of the word, the entire boatload of information, so you can make the most effective decision. So let me, question one really.
And Jeff, one thing I missed in my notes, just for the folks that are here. So we're going to go through all the questions, and then we'll move to open questions. So if there are more questions, we're going to make sure, I just want the folks that are taking the time to come tonight, if you have questions, we're going to address the questions. So we're going to go through the flow, and we'll open it up at the end to open Q and A. Okay? Does that make sense? Yeah, Randy, quick, you got a question on that?
We won't be able to ask questions as you go through.
No, you can. So I think, thank you for clarifying. So what we're trying to make sure we do is, so Jeff is going to start, for example, with a high-level overview of Circuit Breaker, right? But if you have a specific question on, let's say, you know, can you give us more detail on the expenditures from like FY '15, '16, '19, or something like that, then we might say, hey, Randy, that's actually question number five. So can you hold that, right? So, but if you have a question that you don't really see addressed, that it fits within the topic we're on, please ask. And again, as an abundance of caution here, when we get to the end, there'll be open time too, so we can always follow up at that time too. So I just, I don't want folks to think like, we got 15 questions, that's it, we're done. We will take, on behalf of the committee, we will take whatever is required to make sure everyone in the committee and everyone in the public, if they have questions and concerns, they're being addressed. So Jeff?
Is that team okay, committee? Okay. So one of the first questions is an overview of what Circuit Breaker is. And Lisa Forbes, who's the administrative executive assistant to Lauren Atherson, put this together. Just to let you know, Lisa isn't just like a secretary. Lisa's a former sped teacher and has been doing this job. And prior to Lauren, when we had a different person in there and that person had to leave, Lisa kind of took over and provides this information. She also was a school committee member in East Bridgewater, so she kind of wrote this as a special education person and as a school committee member, so it's not high-level language. It's something the easy reader could read. So I'm going to read bits and pieces of this. If people just want to read along, fine, but I'm not going to read everything as verbatim, and feel free to ask questions, and John and John can jump in. Lauren, you can jump in too, if I miss something. So I am going to say, what is Circuit Breaker? Circuit Breaker is the state's special education reimbursement program. Its intent is to provide relief to districts for high-cost special education students. Each year, the state calculates a foundation budget through a complicated formula using Chapter 70 figures and state average per pupil foundation cost. Once the special education foundation figure is established, the district knows the expenditure that we must pay with no reimbursement. Any amount beyond that foundation figure is what the district will be reimbursed at, 75%. So she gave an example. 72,609 actual tuition expenditure, 44,106 the state calculated foundation budget equals 28,503. 28,503 times 75, 75%, is 21,377, the figure that we will get reimbursed. So the actual number figure isn't always the number. And what you might see here too, is you're going to see, or if you read this page, is that we have special education students that we might not get reimbursed for. That means their tuition didn't meet that standard, but they're still a special education student who's getting services provided outside of school. Circuit Breaker reimbursements should be deposited into a special education reimbursement account. These funds may be expended, yes, Chris? Could you just give me, for example, on that last one you mentioned? So if they go to the North River Collaborative, say, and the tuition might be, or they go part-time? Might be $30,000, that doesn't meet the threshold for reimbursement. So the threshold for reimbursement is 44,106. Okay, thank you. Okay? Circuit Breaker reimbursement should be deposited into a special education reimbursement account. These funds may be expended by the school committee in the year received or the following fiscal year for any special education-related expense without further appropriation. As with all special education revenues, the appropriating authority can and should consider this projected reimbursement for the following fiscal year when deliberating on the school district's general fund budget. She mentions out-of-district placements. We have some. I'm not going to go detail by detail. One thing that I will mention is the special education budget is a constant-moving target that will be addressed a little bit later on today, with just over the past couple weeks, what our costs have risen. Sometimes we got an even swap, and sometimes we don't. Out-of-district historical perspective, 2013 to 2021, you're going to see, if you look at that, in 2013, we had 37, 14, 34, 15, 42, 16, 35, 17, 33, 18, 37, 19, 48, 20, 36, and then 21, 42. It fluctuates, we seem to be in the 30s. Post-COVID, what we have seen is an increase in ask for services outside of a collaborative. We've had more residential requests, and that doesn't mean they're guaranteed. So if I can back up a little bit, for students, not every student can go wherever they want. So I think that's a fallacy for some parents. If I'm a special education student, and I say, wow, I went to Cardinal Cushing in Hanover, and that's the place I want my son or daughter to be, we have to go through a process. It's called the team process. We have an out-of-district coordinator who will facilitate that team. Well, it starts around roots, but I'm saying that student might already be an out-of-district student. To go to a residential placement, the out-of-district coordinator gets involved, a lot of dialogue back and forth. Sometimes it might seem very difficult or challenging to a parent when the school says no, because we have to, by law, place that student in the least restrictive environment, not just the place mom and dad want their child to be, and they advocate for their child. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but we have to follow the law. If the least restrictive environment is not appropriate, then we go up the ladder. When I say go up the ladder, general ed classroom, special education classroom, pullout program district-wide, out-of-district placement at a collaborative, out-of-district placement at a private, private school, which could be a school for the deaf, school for autism, something like that, not a collaborative, residential placement. In that too, anytime we are putting a student out, we own their transportation. And if you watch transportation recently, just with costs and things, that's a fluctuation. And John and John will give you some numbers about how that can fluctuate. So that's where we are with out-of-district placements. I'm going to go to page three. What is extraordinary relief? This is something that was asked as a question, and we had to do some digging, or I looked at these guys, and they did some digging to make sure we had the correct answers. The special education Circuit Breaker program included a provision that allows districts to claim for extraordinary relief when claimable special education costs exceed 125% of the previous year's claimed cost. So like last year, Circuit Breaker claim was a total expenditure of $4,581,256. To file for extraordinary relief, we would have to spend $5,726, 570, or 1.145,314 over the budgeted amount. The intent to file extraordinary relief needs to be done by February 26th, and I assume that's in that budget year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Correct.
And Whitman-Hanson has never qualified for extraordinary relief. This mechanism is largely in place for smaller districts with a small out-of-district tuition budget that can be generally impacted by the smallest fluctuations. The schools locally that I reached out to who have filed for extraordinary relief were Hanover, because they have a small budget for special education, and they had some move-ins that were high-cost residential, and West Bridgewater. Hanover is a school district size probably of 2,500, West Bridgewater is a school district size of 1,200. So just that's frame of reference.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So that February 26th date, is it likely you would know by February 26th if you were going to be in a position where extraordinary relief would be needed, or not? By February 26th, you're kind of...
It's only partly through, partway through the year, I agree, but that's the date the state has.
But so, I guess just anecdotally, and you might, I'm not looking for precision here, but how confident would you be by February 26th that, like if Hanover did it, they must have had some fairly significant stuff happen early in the year?
Yes. So if I could, these are, this is going to be, as a rule, this is going to be a situation where somebody isn't going to the North River Collaborative or getting extra help because of a speech impediment. This is probably somebody who is in a full residential program, often somebody who may also be medically fragile. And a placement like that would probably start at $200,000 and could go up to $300,000 or $400,000, depending on the medical needs. They may be, need a constant attendant all day long. So those are the sorts of expenditures that you look at and say, wow, that is just so large. It's not going to fit within the budget that we have.
And do you know historically, have we seen those typically start at the beginning of the year, or do we have them happen during the school year?
It can happen at any point in the year. It can happen at any point in the year.
And just to answer that, Chris, before I became principal here, I was principal at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School. They had three students moved in district who needed out-of-district residential care, three brothers, and the, the, the kind of talk around the superintendent's table, and this was above my pay grade, was we could, if, if we bought a house in another district, it would defray the costs of those special education students because it was going to be close to $800,000 a year. I believe that would have qualified West Bridgewater at that point for extraordinary because there was no way that West Bridgewater budgeted for that. So just, so that's how much it would cost. And again, small district, and I, I don't know what happened, because again, that was above my pay grade at that point, and I never asked that question. But again, what Lisa says, we've never qualified, not saying that it can't happen, but we haven't done that in the past. I'm going to talk through the Circuit Breaker... I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just about that specific situation. Thank you for putting this together. I really appreciate it. You have the ability to have a discussion again to the bottom, and this is, I think, really very helpful, so I appreciate it. You just gave that example about a student who, something happened, something significant happened, and then has to go to like a residential placement, a student that was in district, and then goes to like a residential facility. We're going to be reimbursed for the money we pay for that student next year. So the Circuit Breaker reimbursement we get for that student will increase next year, to be clear. Even though the special ed costs will increase?
Yes.
The amount of Circuit Breaker reimbursement we get next year will increase.
The following, the following year. That's, I believe that's correct.
I think that's an important clarification because I feel like, as we discussed this, sometimes special education costs and Circuit Breaker reimbursement gets blurred. And it's important that we, I think, specifically focus on Circuit Breaker reimbursement because the Circuit Breaker reimbursement for that student would increase next year, even though the special ed costs would increase this year. Does that make sense?
If I could, and, and not to, not to be overly specific, you're, you're absolutely right. Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement program. You spend the money in the first year and you get reimbursed in the second year, as a rule. When you deal with emergency relief, in those cases, you get, you get compensated for that, those expenses within the current year.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying, as we, I mean, I don't want to jump ahead with, one of my questions was about specifically forecasting how much reimbursement we're going to get. I'm just saying, for special ed reimbursement, the actual amount of reimbursement that we're going to get is going to increase, not decrease because of that student. Special ed costs will increase, and special ed budget is kind of separate, but Circuit Breaker reimbursement specifically will increase next year with a student like that.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Sean. So just best practices that, that have been pulled together. Circuit Breaker funding provides some protection for the district from the events of an unanticipated move-in from other districts outside or within the state. These are unpredictable and unforeseen costs that cannot be actually budgeted for. One or two move-ins can deplete an already certified special education budget. For example, if a student moves in from, moves in from out-of-state and requires a high level of service, the district will assume financial responsibility immediately upon the student's enrollment. Another case may be a student who moves to Whitman-Hanson from another mass community where he or she did not have an IEP requiring expensive service, but upon evaluation in Whitman-Hanson educators, it deemed the best possible option for a student would be a placement at one of our local collaboratives or private out-of-district programs. During the course of the certified budget, students may unexpectedly require placement in an out-of-district program. If a student moves in from a collaborative, Whitman-Hanson assumes the fiscal responsibility immediately upon that student's enrollment. Current day-placed students may require a higher level of service mid-year, requiring a change of placement to a residential facility. Having Circuit Breaker as a security fund holds an amount of money that could, that thought to be reasonably sufficient to cover the cost of an unexpected move-in, as stated above, or a change in current IEP, current IEP requiring significant or more costly services. This could include a one-on-one, nursing care, home services, one-on-one para-professional support, specialized equipment, et cetera. Per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, regulations allow communities and school districts to carry forward up to one year's worth of state reimbursement. The Division of Local Services advises communities to build balances in their sped/Circuit Breaker accounts in years when actual costs compare favorably with the budget, so that in years when sped costs increase unexpectedly or the Circuit Breaker reimbursement drops, there is some Circuit Breaker revenue to cover any unforeseen costs. Building a Circuit Breaker balance is good management practice as it eliminates some of the risk associated with unpredictable sped costs. This practice exists in many Massachusetts districts. While it is always projected to be 75%, it's not always guaranteed and subject to annual appropriation. With all of special education costs, the percentage could change and fluctuate. The foundation budget increases every year. Many, many out-of-district tuitions do not reach the minimum expenditure for reimbursement to use Circuit Breaker to build the budget rather than appropriate Circuit Breaker funds as a needed, or on, as an ad-needed basis could potentially be a risk. Using Circuit Breaker funds to balance the budget at the end of the fiscal year is a more responsive budgeting approach to then build the budget based on unpredicted reimbursable reimbursement that is not guaranteed. Using Circuit Breaker for one-time unforeseen expenditures is a more reasonable budgeting approach. Important note, Circuit Breaker funds can only be used for expenditures that generate reimbursable funds, tuition, transportation, ancillary services, which are PTO, T, speech and staff.
So just as a, I want to get to the committee first, but just as a general question, so the best practices that are here, whose, where are those coming from? Are those Lisa's thoughts?
No, that, that's, that's what we've done in the past, that we've pulled from, from special ed. Lauren, do you want to answer that question at all? Where, where Lisa got best practice?
Like, is this an opinion of a person? This isn't necessarily, you know, a...
There's, there is no, no written best practices.
I just want, or is this your best, like, whose best practices are these?
It's a combination of what I heard from my superintendents, from the department, the, the DLS report that, that John gave me, those are what they say. And that, and again, it, it fluctuates by town. Some towns drain it, some towns don't, some split it up. So, but they all, all, every person I've talked to said, be mindful of those unexpected costs. That's all. That's just make sure you, you are prepared for that. However you want to do it within your budget, be prepared for those unexpected costs.
Yeah, so I don't want to speak for Lisa because she's not here, but what I will say is she puts together our Circuit Breaker claim every year for, I don't know how many years, so she is intricately involved with this process. And as Jeff said, too, she's also served on the school committee where she's answered lots of questions related to Circuit Breaker. So I think from all the information that has been researched and gathered over the past couple of weeks as we've been looking at that, that is, I would say, the opinion of, of this administration based on how we have been using Circuit Breaker and on past practice.
Okay.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Fred.
There's a follow-up. The examples that were listed over the past five years, or perhaps a little longer if you'd like, how many times have we experienced any of those examples?
Move-ins, you mean, Fred?
The events that you've listed, you know, a student moving in from another state, you know, the, you know, that puts us in, or collaborative, giving a student from a collaborative. In other words, how many times have we experienced these additional expenses over the past five years? How many instances?
I think, Fred, that's a, that's a, a flow. I can't give you an exact, I, I don't know John and John, or Lauren, you mentioned the other day, Lauren, you might want to give your example of where we are in that, in that flow right now in the past two weeks, how expenses have changed.
Yeah, so I, I can speak to that from just this year, so we have just started this process. And from the first day that we pulled all of our figures, and I might be getting ahead because I think we're going to talk about this, but the way the budget is built from a tuition perspective is we look at our current students who are placed, and we make a decision, a best guess decision about 3% increase for collaboratives, and we make a guess of a 6% increase for private schools. In past years, that's been a pretty good guess, so that's what we use. The Office of Operational Divisional Services do come out with a more accurate list of projected tuitions, usually around March. So we start the process in December, and we revisit it multiple times before we ever bring it to the school committee. We tighten up the numbers once the projections have been published. We closely watch the Board of Directors of each of the collaboratives as they vote on their final budgets. And again, that's usually around March that we receive those, but some we don't fi, get finalized until June. So a lot of times, we are presenting to you a number that does change. We then have an on-the-horizon, that's what we call it, it's a snapshot, of students who have been in discussions within building teams that we see escalating. So they're still within their program, but there's maybe multiple team meetings, maybe there's been hospitalizations, maybe there's been a restraint, maybe there has been increased aggression, and so they're on the horizon. We're doing everything we can, we're increasing services, but we're trying to be fiscally responsible in saying this could be heading in the direction maybe of a collaborative. So we do put those students in the on-the-horizon budget that are calculated and given to you. And this is, like I said, it's a live spreadsheet. So we started this process in December. December 15th, I want to say, is the first ti, oh, I have it here, the 14th. And on 12/17, so three days later, I had to adjust it by $142,000 based on two students that changed in three days. So that's an example from this year. I can tell you that of that list Jeff just read, those are actual, we brought up things that have actually happened, whether it's foster care students, whether it's, I mean, we've had a student that a parent lived in another town, the stu, that town was paying for the student's residential placement, and that town discovered that the other parent lives in our community. And so that town went to DESI. DESI made a ruling that we owned it, cost share, and immediately, we picked up $130,000 placement that we hadn't budgeted for. So those are the kind of things that happen all the time, every year.
And one addition to that, Fred, and, and it happened very recently where a student had a, had to go out on a medical, social, emotional issue, and that student's now going to be in a 45-day placement safety. That's an unexpected cost that we need to do for that student. Thanks, Lauren.
One quick follow-up. Student opportunity act, they contain a provision for transportation reimbursement for sped. Has that kicked in yet? Have they funded it? Last I knew, they hadn't, but...
Last I knew, they hadn't either, right, guys?
I haven't seen anything yet, but...
If, if I could, Fred, this is John Tuffy. We actually did get some money this year in, as a beginning reimbursement for transportation and sped. Up until now, we've never gotten any money at all. They're phasing it in over a period of time. They actually missed the first year that they said they were going to phase it in because of financial issues at the state. The assumption is we will continue to see that funded as we go into fiscal year 23. Thank you.
It was 23%. I believe the first year, 50% the second, so forth. I recall correctly.
I, I believe that what they decided to do was go from a five-year phase in to a four-year phase in, and instead of 20, 40, 60, 80, to go to 25, 50, 75, 100. But what, we haven't seen next year's budget yet. I mean, if we were having this meeting at the end of January, we'd, we'd at least see the governor, probably at this point, be able to see the governor's budget and see what the governor has decided to put in. So we'll have to wait and see. It's unlikely that it'll go back to zero, and I think it's probably going to go forward, but we'll see.
Thank you.
Randy? Or, sorry, Don, yeah, Don, and then I want to get to Randy.
Yeah, this is on topic, the move-ins. So on the Department of Education website, I found a document, like a white paper, and it talks about assignment of local fiscal responsibility and the move-ins. So I made a note as far as this page three goes, you know, what type of move-ins. And this indicates that if there is a student at the Selsho Votech, any type of vocational school, or at the charter school, like Selsho Charter, and they provide some forms of special education and IEPs at those schools, but if that student requires a 766 residential placement, it automatically falls back on the home district, on us. So that's just another example of when that type of change can occur. That's what I...
And that wouldn't only require a residential. That would, if that student was at Voc Tech and they decided that it would have to go to a collaborative, we'd own that as well. They're our student.
Okay.
I'll go one further. Our school choice kids that are at East Bridgewater, if they're determined to need special education services outside of what East Bridgewater can provide, we own those. If a student goes to a Catholic private school and it's determined by our team that that student needs a higher level of service, we own those students. If a student is homeschooled and they decide to re-enroll in our school, we provide services for those. So those are the other potentials, and I'm not saying we have a lot of those. There's potentials. It's just things that we're on the hook for that we don't know. So it's just not our own, it could be other, collaborative and charter, so I appreciate that.
And that tuition bill or that bill would come in?
Right away.
This month, right away? So that's, that is an expense.
It's just an expense.
Yep.
Okay.
Randy, go ahead.
Randy Lamontina, Selectment, Town of Whitman. Unfortunately, before I get into my que, I can already see this meeting going off the rails because what we're now talking about is special education costs, not Circuit Breaker reimbursement. I think everyone in this room knows that...
So Randy, I'm just going to stop you, and I'm going to ask if you have a question.
I have numerous questions.
Okay.
So I, my first question is, why are we confusing special education costs with Circuit Breaker reimbursement? So I'm, I'm just going to start by going through my questions on Mrs. Forbes's opinion piece. And I respect her opinion, and I respect anyone that's done this for a long time, but unfortunately, that's what it is. When we talk about best practices, I, I, my question was, what yours was, Chris, where do you find those? Because they're not to be found anywhere. In, in fact, what you will find, though, is a CMR that actually tells you how you're supposed to use it. Mass CMR 10.79D.
So I'm going to stop you because that's question three, and we're going to get into that in specific...
Okay, well, I, I think it relates to, you can't toss out, these are best practices...
So, 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 let me kind of, let me see if this works for you in terms of reframing it. So, you know, I'm asking the same question as, where did these best practices come from? So what I would, what my opinion of that is, it's, it's an opinion, and I would last, ask everyone to hold their, we're going to accept those as what we should do until we actually go through all the information because it's simply an opinion of best practice from someone. And I think the charge of this committee working with the administration is to actually figure out what those best practices are. After we've looked at data points that either support or don't support what we talked about, we look at the specific regulations that are there and are not. So I'm, I'm kind of on the same page with you, Randy. I don't think we should just, I don't think we should just say, well, we're just going to follow three, four, or five. We're no, overview of Circuit Breaker is overview of Circuit Breaker? I think when we start getting into best practices, to me, that's, that's the end of this conversation. It's premature to do that now. That's, that's my two cents.
My question would be then, the noteworthy, the foundation budget increases annually, increases each year potentially leading to less reimbursement. I think by your own chart, it doesn't increase annually.
So that would be chart C, right? You're looking at like FY...
It obviously doesn't increase.
So can we hold that for that chart? I have the same point, I have the same point highlighted as you.
All right, I just didn't want to go back on her, if we're going to move on.
Yeah, no, no, all right, so let's, let's, so your question of, when we get to chart C...
Which is question four, I think.
Question four, we need to talk about the comment that the total foundation budget increases every year when it looks like there's, it doesn't. So agreed, Randy? Good, good question.
And I guess, and I think this is actually a question down the road, but it goes back to her. How are you calculating? Because when you go on the websites, there actually says there should be a, there is some type of formula, a clear formula to understand how you calculate your reimbursement. So could you speak to that? What is your formula, I guess, to...
John, can you speak to Circuit Breaker formula reimbursement?
So sometime in June of the year, we get a, we get forms sent to us from the state, asks us to fill in the, fill in a grid that have, that has the allowable costs. And, and we all know what those are, and we fill in that grid and submit it to the state. It's from July 1st to June 30th, so it gets to, it gets, it gets transmitted to the state somewhere around the middle of July, and then they go through that and they apply the, what is the foundation budget that year, what is, and what is the percentage available, and that's how we get reimbursed.
So basically, you're taking your 38 qualifying students, listing out their expenses, or 37, however many...
We're taking all the allowable, all the allowable expenses. We put it in there...
A guesstimate eligible cost, correct?
Eligible cost, not guesstimates, but actual numbers. That's why we're waiting until the end of the fiscal year.
And the only variable is the foundation budget, but above X...
The, the two variables become, what is the percentage that they're going to reimburse? It has been 75% for some time. There have been a small variation these last few years, but times have been good, and the commitment of the state has been high, so we've tended to get 75%. And then the much-talked-about foundation budget, that foundation budget changes every year. It does not, they're incremental increases because it deals with inflation. Occasionally, there are some small changes in rules, so it makes somewhat of a larger change. But that's how we fill it out, we send it in, and then the state tells us what, how much that, do they accept it, and what will the reimbursement be? And periodically, the state comes out and does an audit to look at the records and make sure we have backup for the costs that we submitted. The last time they audited us was in, for fiscal year 19, I believe, and we got an audit result back in 20 that had no material issues with it.
Okay, I'll bring that up, because I do have a question regarding that. So I guess my question is to you, so based on previous history and track record, knowing your students, you would say your reimbursement is fairly predictable, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
John, go ahead.
I'll try to be quick, thank you. There is specific language about a special ed stabilization account, and I think that language is very much, is very similar to, it is, I mean, I looked it up, it's very similar to the way she initially described like your best practice. The best practice seems sound, obviously. I mean, I work in special ed, and I know how difficult it can be with some things about it. So, putting in best practices in place to budget for the increases in special education makes sense. I just think a special education stabilization account seems to make more sense than circuit breaker reimbursement. And I would argue that the language in the regulation kind of speaks to that. The second point would be, you brought up the move-in, and I did ask a question about this, Don, but just a quick clarification, move-in is referring to a student that moves into the district. So if there was a student who lived in Abington, who went to a residential facility, they moved into the district, my understanding is, and say they moved in last week, my understanding is that Abington would still pay for that student through the following fiscal year? Is that accurate?
So, the move-in law is April 1st to June 30th?
April 1st to...
So, if somebody moved in after, or if, I'm saying it right, they moved in on April 2nd, 2022, that student would attend here in September, Abington would own that cost. If they were, if they were a residential student, we wouldn't own that cost that fiscal year?
No.
You're correct, maybe I misspoke on that, but it's April 1st is the deadline, because they assume we wouldn't have a chance to budget for that student, and Abington would. The challenge is that student that might be in a collaborative placement who moves in, who might escalate. So that's the unknown there.
The parallel from Abington to Whitman-Hanson that moves in, it's on Abington for that fiscal year, not on us.
Correct.
So that's an important, I think, clarification with the move-in law.
Although, to be clear, if it is, it only covers private placements, so it doesn't cover collaborative placements.
Yes.
So, we own the collaborative expenses.
I think you were pretty specific about the situations that it covered. I'm just, I'm stating the obvious situation that the move-in law speaks to that is not in what she wrote about. The obvious, one, is someone who's in a residential facility en masse. They move into the district, and we're under the assumption that we'll have to pay for it, you know what I mean, in February. That's not the case. The previous location, the previous town, would have to pay for that during that fiscal year, because they know that it's difficult to predict. So, I think it's important to know that. Also, you did mention that there was some language in the Department of Local Services about these best practices. Do you have a reference, so they can look that up?
I mentioned that Sean, and I don't know, John, was that DLS that you sent me? I'm sorry. It could have been something different.
So, I recognize the language that Mrs. Forbes had used, as some of it actually came directly from a, and if you'll bear with me for a quick second...
And I might have misspoke on DLS, I'm sorry.
Actually, you didn't. If you'll bear with me for a second, Department of Education put out a, something called a PRIMER, the Financial Aspects of Special Education.
Yep, yep.
In that, it says, "Circuit breaker reimbursements should be deposited into a special education reimbursement account. These funds may be expended by the school committee in the year received or the following And the school...
I recognize that one.
And the appropriating authority should consider projected reimbursements for the following year when deliberating on the school district's general fund budget. And then the note that was also in there about Department of Education regulations allow communities to hold it for a year, and DLS, which is Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue, they're the parts that, they're the people who, if you will, regulate, local government suggested that having a, having surplus to carry over is useful. So that's where that language came.
That specific language that you just, that last sentence that you just said, is in that PRIMER?
Yes. It's, I will read it, so there's no confusion.
Yeah, cool.
Since DESE regulates, regulations allow communities and school districts to carry forward up to one year's worth of state reimbursement. DLS, Division of Local Services, advises communities build balances in their sped circuit breaker accounts in years when actual costs compare favorably with the budget, so that in years when sped costs increase unexpectedly, or the circuit breaker reimbursement drops, there will be some circuit breaker revenue to cover any unforeseen costs. Building a circuit breaker balance is good management, is a good management practice, as it eliminates some of the risk associated with these unpredictable sped costs.
Thank you. And do you know the date on that?
How about we'll just, John, can we keep that as a follow-up, and let's just post that? Let's just have that as an additional document that we'll post.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
DLS item. I guess just, I want to ask a quick question, John, real quick. On the example, so 44106, which is the state calculated foundation budget, can you just spend a little bit of time on that? Is that specific to Whitman-Hanson, and that's, or that's everyone?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, the actual 44, and if we're going to cover this in number four, then tell me we're going to cover this in number four. But, in the first question that Jeff answered, that very first example he gave, where he says, hey, the actual tuition's 72609, and the state calculated foundation budget is 44106. Where is that 44106? Is that, the state gives us that on an annual basis, and that's the same for every district?
Correct.
Okay. So that doesn't matter whether you're...
Doesn't matter if you're Abington or Whitman-Hanson.
Wellesley or Gateway, okay.
It is, it is the state average.
Seems a little arbitrary, but okay. Got it.
John Galvin, High Street, Whitman.
Hold on one second, I want to do John, and then Fred will come right back to you. Go ahead, John, sorry.
Okay. I just first want to comment that all comments that I make tonight are, do not necessarily represent the committees that I'm on, it's me as a taxpayer of Whitman. On page four, item number four, I just, this is really a comment. It says, quote, in the middle of the paragraph, "To use circuit breaker to, quote, build the budget rather than, rather to appropriate circuit breaker funds on an as-needed or emergency basis could potentially be a risk." If we properly use circuit breaker, the way we're supposed to use circuit breaker, we're not building a budget. If we apply circuit breaker funds, we are removing expenses from the budget. So, to use the quote, "Build the budget," I don't want it to come across as we're adding to the budget, we're adding to the total cost of the budget. The more circuit breaker funds we use in the budget, the lower the budget becomes. So I think that's an important point. So, I don't want to beat this, I know we're going to...
No, I think, because I think, right, when we get to, when we got to two, three, four, right, and five, it really became, those are, it's an opinion of best practice. Doesn't mean we have to follow it, doesn't mean we have to agree to it, it's one person's opinion. So, I got Fred, and then Randy. Fred?
Real quick. The special education stabilization fund that we're allowed to create to carry monies over, similar to any other stabilization type of a fund, is that the only way that you can actually carry over sped costs? The way we've been doing it now, don't we end up putting it somewhere different, such as E and D?
So I think Fred, if you, if, let's leave it at this, if there's a question relating to the special, the potential utilization of a special education stabilization fund, let's add that as a question at the end, because I, that's not a question that we have, and I think we can get to it, but I don't want to start jumping off the rails. So, adding that to my list of open items.
I just have one question, and I see it in this document, and Mr. Tuffy just said it. Circuit breaker reimbursement should be deposited into a special education reimbursement account. Have we done that? Mr. Tuffy?
Yes. Well, go ahead, John.
Yes.
We have a special education reimbursement account.
It is a separate, it is a separate account within the accounting system.
We hadn't just been transferring the money into the general fund, right?
Correct.
Well, hold on, so...
You're saying we have a special education reimbursement account? When you, when you didn't, no.
So I think...
You're directing it at him, I mean.
So Randy, let me clarify the question. You're asking, do we have a, what, somewhere in that chart of accounts, is there a special education stabilization reimbursement fund?
No, not stabilization, that's...
Oh, I'm sorry, a special education reimbursement fund, sorry.
A circuit breaker state fund, yes. A special revenue fund for circuit breaker, that's what it's called, but that's the technical title.
And you're transferring the money then to the general fund from...
All the revenue that comes in from circuit breaker goes into that fund, without question.
Okay, so we have a special education reimbursement account?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to, I think, move on to the next question, because I think some of what we have in the subsequent questions is where we're kind of sitting right now. So, and I know, I get Randy's point of, we need to talk about the reimbursement and how it works, but part of the reimbursement is all around special education. So I think the next question was, the thought was just spending a little bit of time understanding some of those special education costs and where they've been. So I don't know who's...
Yep, so John, number two.
So, question number two that we received was, can you please share an overview of special education expenses over the last several years? So that's, I tried to highlight up at the top, A, this chart, it's total sped costs from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 21, and that's what it looks like for the people that are here. And in fiscal year 14, the total sped costs were $7.7 million. Again, I'm going to round off the numbers here. Fiscal year 21, there were $11.2 million, or about a $3.48 dollar increase over those years, or about 44.95% between those years. And these, that, this, these amounts came from the end-of-the-year report that DESI, the Department of Elementary-Secondary Education, requires whoever's doing my position's job to file. So it's Schedule IV that's on that form. So, that's, that's the overall sped cost, regardless of what fund it came out of, that's what it looks like.
Okay. Any questions on kind of just sense of what those expenses look like, right?
Number three was...
Real quick question?
Yep.
John, you had mentioned regardless of what fund they came out of, what would the funding sources be?
So, for example, you know, I'm going to make the numbers up, I don't know if you have the chart in front of you, but if you do, it's fiscal year 18, the total was $9.3 million. Again, I don't know the breakout, but eight million could have come from circuit break, could have come from the general fund expenditure budget, and 1.3 million could have come from the circuit breaker fund. Again, I just picked that number, please don't go to fiscal year 18 and say there wasn't that amount in there. But what I'm saying is, it doesn't matter what the, where the expenditure came from, this is the total, if it was sped-related, that's where, that's the amount. And that's right off the end-of-the-year report.
Okay, and the reason we wouldn't take it out of circuit breaker is it wouldn't qualify? And it will come out of the general fund?
So Fred, so Fred, the question we're on right now is just an overview of special education expense, not how we're paying for the expense.
It's every special education-related cost, period, that's it. Regardless of what fund or whatever, it was special education-related, it's on this Schedule IV, sorry. And that's something that I have to file, or whoever's doing my job.
Okay, Fred?
I'll follow up after this.
Yep, yep.
I have concern seven.
Okay.
All right, so question number three, can you please review the DESI requirement for the utilization of circuit breaker fund in 603 CMR 1007? Has the district followed the requirements outlined in 9D? Has the district followed the requirements outlined in 9D 3? That's where I go to past practice here. I don't believe we followed to the letter of what we should be doing. John has picked that up, John Stambrick, and that's where he brought it to the attention of the Budget Subcommittee. And John, if you want to go into your chart, label B, and explain what the plan or the proposal might be to the school committee moving forward.
All right, thank you. So, again, this is going to be chart B, circuit breaker activity. So, how we've used it in the past, if you're looking at the line, the top line under the activity, it says, "Beginning balance, state reimbursement," that's the revenue that has come in. This is tuition to collaboratives, professional salaries, contractual services, and transfers to the general fund, those are expenditures, transfers are not expenditures, but they're an expense. And then the graph under B, on the activity, that just graphs the amounts that are in the table. So, again, in past budgeting, the district has included a portion of the expected circuit breaker reimbursement in the following year's operating budget, as you can see by the chart. Again, the proposal to the Budget Subcommittee was that the upcoming fiscal year 23 district general fund operating budget will not include any circuit breaker reimbursement amounts in, as a revenue. The expected circuit breaker reimbursement will be shown separately as a special revenue fund source of revenues and expenditures. So, somewhere on a page with special revenues, it'll have the amount that we're going to use out of circuit breaker, and the expenses that are related to that, it will not be in the general fund. The district has carried circuit breaker reimbursements from one year to the next in the past, and from FY 14 to the present, the district has not exceeded the one-year carry-forward as outlined in D 3 of 603 CMR 10.07. So I think that answered the question, and if anyone has any questions about it, we can go forward.
I have a question. And I apologize if this has come up. So is there, and I don't know if it's in a past practice here, or a state regulation somewhere, a recommended or best practice percentage of circuit breaker you should use per year? Or is it just like, let's see, because obviously you don't want to use it all, right? But, is there a recommended percentage to use? I mean, how in this, so how do you determine how much of the circuit breaker money you're going to use to pay for the sped costs, to then impact the budget, at the same time preparing for a rainy day emergency, so to speak, with any other placements? Is there anything on the books anywhere where that is, or is it just pretty much up to us as a committee, the Budget Subcommittee, those kinds of things?
We haven't found best practice, we haven't found that percentage amount.
Okay.
What was recommended to us, to you, was this committee should form a policy regarding that, how much they, how much you want to spend. And that could change, but the policy, a policy so that when I'm gone, when these guys are gone, and you guys might be here, that committee can go back to, so we don't run into this trouble, problem again. It's been discussed as a committee, it's a policy saying, the committee will, based upon numbers, certify an amount. But I can't find anywhere that says you should hold over half, hold over all, hold over none. It's not written anywhere, and in my superintendent's group, it's all over the place. And it depends on the year, I think. It depends on the fiscal year, and where people might need money for the budget.
Two comments on that, Hillary. So, in one of these questions, we did reach out to MASC, and asked what the best practice was, and it was all over the place.
Yeah.
And then to your specific question of what does the regulation say, that's what he said. Reimbursements made by the department and deposited in the special education reimbursement fund may carry forward for one fiscal year. The regulation just says you may carry up to that amount.
Right, so it has a cap on it, but it doesn't say how much you should spend.
Absolutely not. It just says, that's the maximum.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And I don't know, to elaborate on that, and basically though, and maybe you answer this later on, but to that point, if we carry over and we don't spend, it goes into E and D, correct? So, if we carry over, we decide we're going to spend 50%, put 50% in the FY 23 budget and carry over 50%. If that isn't done, if that doesn't, we don't have costs, it ends up going into E and D by law, correct?
Can I have, ask a follow-up? So, throughout the year, you might have, we talked about move-ins and stuff, or let's say there is a need for a sub-separate something at the high school, or one of the schools, can... Can this, can this, can you pull from circuit breaker to hire personnel, or is it only for, is that, do you understand that question? So like, if there's a need for something that pops up, like we, you know, in that case, like direct student, not out-of-district placement, you know, creating a sub-separate classroom for maybe behaviorals or something, right? We've determined that there's too many at Whitman Middle, so we need another class, and we found someone who can do it. Can we pull from circuit breaker to pay for that personnel to do that, or is that not in the regs?
So, you can.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
I mean, I think that, I think that administration needs to look at that and say, do we want to build a separate program? Probably not.
Well, because that's a whole other cost.
In fact, in the end, that is the school committee's decision as to how they want to spend their money. I, my own, my past experience is that it is not unusual, for instance, if you had a student that now requires a one-on-one aide. Now, you've budgeted for three one-on-one aides, but it turns out that you now need a fourth one-on-one aide, that's the sort of thing that you might turn to circuit breaker and say, we can subsidize that individual. Sure.
And just, if you could go back to this chart, the one that's labeled B, the only time that's happened, and from 14 to 18, is, sorry, 14 to 21, was in fiscal year 18. See where it says professional salaries, which is about halfway down in the chart? Fiscal year 18, $183,093 was used there. So that hasn't, it doesn't happen a lot, but in the last, whatever, how many years that is, seven or eight years, it did happen once.
Thank you.
John?
So, I think this is probably the most important chart in the entire presentation. Because in my opinion, this shows all of the areas in which we need to address and identify. In fiscal 18 and 19, it shows the drastic overspending of circuit breaker money. And in my opinion, in fiscal 21 and 22, it shows the drastic under-allocation of circuit breaker money. I think it's important, there are a lot of details on here that are a little misleading. I have a lot of questions on this slide, Chris, so I don't know if you want me to just ask them all at once.
Why don't you just go one at a time, and we'll.
Okay, I mean, just, the first one is really clarity, and I know in fiscal 19, on July 1st, the starting balance was 2,007.24. But on July 2nd, we deposited 246,943. So that's a little misleading, and I know that's covered in a later slide, but I thought it would have been important to at least note that on here, that, you know, that the fiscal year 18, last quarter deposit got delayed. So it didn't show up properly in the end-of-year amounts. It's a little misleading, because we're actually starting that year with a lot more money than we say we are. But it all goes away at the end of the year anyway, because we only budgeted $735,000 in fiscal 19, yet we overspent it by almost $500,000. So we budgeted 735, and then at some point, the decision was made during the year that we needed to spend more circuit breaker money. And my question is, I have two questions here, actually, who authorized that? And knowing how we thought we were doing that in the past, where it was, you know, paid out of general fund, it clearly says here it wasn't transferred to the general fund. So how was that money authorized to be spent? And how did it get spent if it wasn't transferred to the general fund? I mean, I'm racking my brain trying to figure out, and the only way I could figure it out is that that business manager back then knew that they could remove those expenses, that we have just identified. I don't know any other way they could have done it, except write a check from the circuit breaker account. So that's kind of my question, who authorized, in those two years, the additional spending of circuit breaker? And how did the money actually get paid out if it wasn't transferred into the general fund?
So. So the first question about being misleading, I wrote, what is on this chart is what is in the accounting system?
Right.
In the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. Telling the truth, to me, can't possibly be misleading. So that is what is in this system. And I, and the revenue that was, like you're saying, July 2nd, we'll be talking about that later, that's exactly out of the manual, the rulebook of how to post revenue.
I understand that. And I'm not, I'm not saying that, all I'm saying is, is that to identify it later on in the chart, it would have been helpful to identify it here.
What I'm doing with this chart is giving you the exact thing, the exact movement and activity from the, in this district, from the, I need to calm down here, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, so move it, I mean, right, so I think.
It is not misleading, is the answer.
I understand that, it's just that it would have been helpful to clarify it a little bit more on this chart, why there was an additional 244 in one year, and even though it was a reimbursement.
It's what's in the system.
Right, and I think.
Misleading to tell the truth.
So hang on, hang on, guys, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Your second question.
Because we're not gonna do the back and forth, right, of misleading, and, but we're not doing that. So the que, so this is, you're saying this is what's in the accounting system, it's what is in the accounting system. Your point is there's some transfers that happen differently. I believe those are actually literally covered in one of the other charts, so we'll get to those. You're, can you go back to the actual question, which was, who authorized the transfer, what was the transfer in FY 19, is that the gist?
18 and 19, there was a total of, hold on, in 18, sorry, I've got a lot of notes here. It was 254,003 in 18, and 174,261 in 19. Actually, I'm sorry, it was more than that, it was 441,530 in 18, and 496,695 in 19.
And John, just to help us, where are you getting those numbers from?
That was expended above and beyond what we had in the budget as circuit breaker revenue. So basically.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow along.
So I think the question is, John, can you just help us understand where you're getting those numbers from, that's all.
Well, it's right on their sheet. The seven, so at the bottom, transfer to general fund, 750 in fiscal 18.
Yeah.
That was what we actually had in the budget of the amount.
Correct.
So all the numbers above that, the 254, the 183, and the 4407, those were all spent in addition to what we had budgeted. So, had, you know, under the way we thought we were operating, we were transferring money to the circuit breaker, I mean, to the general fund to pay those. How did those get paid if they weren't transferred to the general fund? Because it says on the sheet that they weren't. And then my other question is, who authorized spending all of the additional money if it wasn't the school committee? And I know it's not this administration, and it's technically probably not an answer that you can answer, who authorized it? But how did it get spent is maybe a question that we can figure out, because if it didn't go to the general fund, did it get taken out, or did it, you know? How did the expenditures get?
So do you have any answer to the question?
So, I don't. I mean, I could look, I can dig into fiscal 18, that wasn't fiscal 18, I'd started in July of 18. So fiscal 19 budget was done before me, but I was the superintendent. I can only assume the former business manager did past practice, I don't know if it's just those two years, if you go back more, I don't know. I could research more for you, I don't have an answer for you, it's an honest answer, I don't have an answer for you right now.
All right, so then, a relation to that question, in fiscal 21.
Yeah.
In fiscal 21, we budgeted $700,000 in circuit breaker account, yet we transferred 991,258 to the general fund. That, to me, is.
So I have an answer for you later on, and that was a specific question about that.
Okay.
So you want me to answer that now?
I didn't see a specific question in it, but.
Well, it was about how we planned in fiscal 20, how we planned in fiscal 21, and how we planned in fiscal 22.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
And I have more, but I'll.
And if you don't, if I don't answer it then, you're gonna ask me anyway, so.
John, I apologize, I didn't mean to offend you, I was just, I wasn't accusing anybody of anything. I was just saying that this was a little misleading, and it would have been helpful to put that information on this chart, too.
And we've covered it, so we've covered it, we've covered it, we've covered it, we're moving on.
But the truth is never misleading.
We're moving on. Uh, hold on, Don, and then Randy, yeah, Don, go ahead.
Just a follow-up to Mr. Galvin's comment, because he mentioned misleading, I believe.
I really want to move on from the.
No, but it's relevant, if everyone looks on page two at our numbers of out-of-district placements, it's, look at 2019, it went up 11 students. So to say it was overspending in the district, I think that statement's misleading. I think we spent because we went from 37 to 48. So I'm simply looking at that number and FY 19 expenses.
I think, and I'm not, so I really want to move on here, but, so John, tell me if I don't understand what you said. But I think the point John Galvin was making was that when you look at the chart, the overspending that he's referring to is we were actually taking more than, we were depleting that one-year balance over those years. So I think, I'm not sure that's what, I'm not sure that's.
I heard in a sense that we spent too much. Well, to me, if I just look at number of students, it clearly we had tuition bills of 11.
So John, do I have it right, you're not saying we, you're not saying we spent more than we should have? You're saying that, you're saying that based upon the balance that we had, it completely depleted. Correct.
And what we actually spent in the end-of-year report, what it says, and somebody actually was in the end-of-year report, but that's probably too. I'm not saying that we spent too much, that we shouldn't have spent so much, I'm saying that we budgeted in the amount.
Sure, probably for 37 students, and it went up to 48. That's what this number tells me here.
I think I made, Don, you're taking umbrage with the spending, and that's not the case here.
So Randy, just keep me, question, go ahead, question.
I do have a question, but I can answer this one. The regulation actually is that if more money is going to be added to the general fund in any given year after the budget has been certified, the school committee needs to vote on it. That's all we're getting at, Don. We're not getting it, spending is, you should have authorized that, you should have been made aware that that money was being added to the overall budget after it was certified.
And there's already a question that specifically asks what the school committee was aware of and when.
It doesn't need to be argumentative.
Exactly. There's nothing that needs to be argumentative.
No, I mean, I think we're here to discuss a mistake that I think we're dancing around. Mistake was obviously made, the way this was calculated, an accounting mistake, and then spending. I mean, I'll go back to, and this is the one thing I actually very much agree with in Mrs. Forbes's letter. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement program. It is intended to provide relief, meaning if done right, you have your sped expenses that are through the roof and climbing, and we know that, and we're trying to cover those. So what's supposed to happen is, the money you get from circuit breaker is supposed to offset those, and then the bill comes to the town. So in turn, the member towns actually, it frees up more money. And that's not the way this has been done, and that's the way it was supposed to be done. So how much, I mean, I was actually shocked when Jeff just said the money gets returned to E and D if we don't use it. So basically what you're saying is you're generating free cash off the towns. It's mind-boggling to me. It's not about giving you less money, Don, it's about making, you actually.
So again, Randy, 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 stop, 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 because we're not gonna do this, we're not, we're not.
Let's take some ownership, then, I mean, we have a discussion.
Hang on, I said we're not gonna do it. We can all go home, we can do this again next week, and we can sit here for hours and hours and hours, but we're not gonna do what we're doing right now, okay? So simply put, if you, so Randy, I hear what you're saying, but I also think, direct the comments to me. What, and what is the question?
Through the chair, who authorized more money above a certified budget?
When?
What, and so are you, I mean, Randy, I guess the question that we have here is.
Fiscal 21, who authorized more spending in the budget above what was certified?
So on, so is this different than question eight, where we're asking, could you please share what information was shared, if any, with the school committee from FY 20 pertaining to circuit breaker balance, estimated receipts, and transfer from the circuit breaker? You're asking the authorization for 21?
Yes, for certain operation, authorization by the school.
For FY 21.
Are you talking about the 991 versus the 700?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the Department of Revenue, when they certify our E and D, they asked me specifically twice whether or not I had transferred the required amount out of the circuit breaker fund in order for, we would not carry more than one year's worth as per the regulation. So it had to be transferred, otherwise we would not have had our E and D certified. So I'm following the Department of Revenue's directive. It has to be done that way, if, otherwise we would not have an E and D.
So did, did the school committee authorize the additional 291,000?
No, but it, we would never have ever had our balance sheet certified if I had not done that.
So my question to you is, because I think you said we had never been in this position, we had actually underspent circuit breaker that year, and we were gonna reach our threshold, and therefore, Department of Revenue came to you and said, you need to spend more money. And that's when.
Well, we don't need to spend more money.
You were gonna go over the previous year's allotment, correct?
We don't need to spend more money, I need to transfer the costs that were already allocated in the general fund and approved by the school committee. I need to cancel.
And that was 221,000 in the budget that had been budgeted, correct? And then was offset by circuit breaker spending, right?
Are we talking about the 700 and the 991?
We're talking about the difference between the 700 and the 991.
Okay, that's what I just asked, okay, so 291 is what you're talking about?
Yes.
So I, the question is, should I have done what the Department of Revenue told me to do?
This isn't, this is not about, I agree with what happened. I'm not saying you did anything wrong here. What I'm trying to do is follow the money. So you had reached that threshold of possibly having too much circuit breaker money, correct? Which, which that year was 1.3 million dollars, so you were basically 291, you had one, close to 1.6 million dollars of circuit breaker, you had to spend down 291. That was in the budget that had been paid for by the towns of Whitman and Hanson, and then that 291, circuit breaker goes over, covers those costs, and that 291 got returned to E and D?
Over the $700,000 amount, we had to spend 986,336.08, because that was the FY 20 balance. So again, I'm not splitting bills, that's why it ended up to being 991.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the process. Do I have, am I correct in my thinking of the process?
That.
That you would reach the circuit breaker threshold, that you could not carry over more than the previous year's award. You were above that by 291,000.
Yes.
As you go to close the budget out, Department of Revenue came to you and said, hey, you've got too much money in circuit breaker. Throw 291 in more, and in return, the town's money then goes to E and D, correct?
So I guess, Randy, that's where I'm getting a little, I'm not sure on that last part, right, because.
Well, it had already been paid.
Yeah, but I think.
And you're just offsetting budgeted expenses. The budget didn't go up anymore.
So budget expenses for special education didn't go up anymore?
No, what you, the budget itself is over. If DOR came in, you were closing out the sheet, and they notified, John, that, hey, you're over the amount you can carry in circuit breaker. So what you need to do is just offset some expenses. And then, so it's basically, if we're talking about moving forward, how we, like, I think the Whitman and Hanson representatives have a problem with that situation that just happened. That you can essentially bill us in the budget and then say, well, we can just offset costs, it's not an accurate budget, I'm sorry.
Okay. I think we're gonna cover some of the questions in.
Just to clarify that real quick, I think what Randy's saying.
Hang on a second, don't, don't, don't cut me off. So I think just to clarify this a little bit, I think there are questions about process, and I think we're hopefully gonna get to some of those in terms of what was done and what was provided, right? And so that's, we've got, we've gotta get to some of those questions, but go ahead, John. I mean, right, are we on the same page?
So what Randy was saying is that because that 291 was taken out at the end of the year, that Whitman and Hanson had already paid the expenses that that 291 was used to offset. So that 291 became free cash, and it went to E and D. And honestly, that's gonna happen this year, too. going to happen this year, too.
So I guess-
Your 700,000 now that you're going to have to spend by the end of this year on top of the 600,000 that you've already budgeted.
Right. So the part I want to understand, at least, and I may be looking at this completely incorrectly, and I, so you can help me with this, because I know you get this, right? And we're talking about FY-
Not, 21, last year.
21, right? So if we look at FY 21, I don't have the end-of-year or the annualized budget in front of me, but did the special education expense also stay flat? Or, so did we pull that into the budget? Or did expenses go up and there was an offset against additional expense? That's what I'm trying to figure out, right?
Well, it was the end of the year, so the, you'd already done $3 million worth of line item transfers. So the balance, the, the, the budget should have been balanced at that point. And then, as he's closing out the budget, they, they said, hey, you're over by 291, so you've got to move that in.
I guess the piece I'm going to need these guys' help for is understanding in FY 21, what did the special education expense, hang on, Chris. Chris, hang on. What did the special education expense look like, right? So, because they're moving parts, but if the expenses go out-
But not when you're closing out the budget at the end of the year, and they say you have 291 too much.
Yeah, go ahead, Fred.
This is a quick follow-up question. In FY 21, were any eligible expenses paid out of the general fund as opposed to being paid out of the special ed or Circuit Breaker Fund?
So, the, the way it works, Mr. Small, is that you spend the money first out of the general fund, and then when you, Circuit Breaker money comes in, you transfer the money from the general fund line to the Circuit Breaker line. So it's spent out of the general fund first, and then transfer it.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered it, but-
Yeah. I, I think, yeah, yeah, let's, let's keep going.
So question number four, John. Can, can you please share how the reimbursement rate or foundation amounts have varied over the past several years?
So that is chart labeled C, Foundation, and percent reimbursement. Looks like this. Reimbursement rate since fiscal year 14 has fluctuated from a low of 73.56% in fiscal year 15 to a high of 75 and 1/4%, and that was in fiscal year 16. And then the foundation amount is, is the chart underneath that, right here. And that has fluctuated from a low of 1.357 in fiscal year 18 to a high of 1.9 million in fiscal year 20. So that's how it's, it's changed over the years.
So I think before we kind of, before you stop there, there was the question that came up earlier. I thought I had asked for a tip. Hang on a second.
At the foundation budget?
Yeah, do you have it in front of you? Do you want to read it?
It was page one, is that the question, the calculation?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, where it says noteworthy, the foundation budget increases each year, potentially lending to less reimbursement over tuition cost, right?
I think I, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Don. No, go ahead. You got it in front of you.
I actually agree with Lisa Forbes on this, because let's just say on this example on page one, 72,000 is your actual tuition. If that stays the same the next year, you have that same tuition cost. But we know every year, DESI reevaluates the foundation budget. Mr. Tuffy said there are incremental increases for inflation. So let's say that that goes up, and they're now reducing it not by 44,000, but let's say 46,000. So then it becomes a reduction of 26,000 times 75%. You are now getting less reimbursement if your expenses stayed the same. So that foundation budget can negatively impact your reimbursement.
So, and maybe it's a clarification. Is there a difference, I'm trying to get this right. So is there a difference between saying the foundation per pupil amount increases year-over-year versus the budget? Because I think that's the problem, right? If we look at chart C, and we look at FY 20, we see the total, total foundation of 1.9, and then in FY 21, it's 1.7. So it clearly didn't increase. Now, there were less students.
Correct.
But, or just, so just to clarify maybe what we were trying to get to earlier, it's not the total foundation amount needs to increase every year. It's that, it's that 44, 106.
It's, it's the individual foundation, but the foundation budget for each individual that, as that increases, the, the threshold that you have to spend locally increases as well.
Okay. So I think we're all, I think that hopefully clarifies it a little bit. Yes? I see a nodding head over there, so that's good. Yes, Fred?
The, the way they determine that foundation budget is very simple. They take, you have 351 approximately districts across the state, and they average what their foundation budget is. And that's how they determine that 44,000, something like that.
Okay. No, and I, I mean, I think just, it's just, right, we have chapter 70, and it, it does all this ability to pay and all these fluctuations, and then we get to the foundation amount for special education that is take a general amount. It just, it just seems a little odd, but, just as a comment. But yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Thank you. I know it can feel tense at times, but this is important. You know, there's a lot of money at stake, and I think it's important that we have a full, thorough discussion. The, so the peaks and valleys seem to coincide with the enrollment, right? You know what I mean? As the enrollment dropped from FY 16 to FY 17, there's an obvious drop. And then, and then from FY 20 to FY 21, there's an obvious drop in enrollment. But I think it's helpful to look at the, because the question was about how much it fluctuates, right? So if you do divide, and I think I asked Mr. Tuffy if this is how you'd do it, but take the total foundation and just simply divide it by the number of students, and you'd get the foundation figure per pupil. And that number is actually relatively stable. I mean, it was like 39,000, and then 40,000, and then 41,000, and then 41,000, and then 41,000, and then 43,000, and then 44,000. So it doesn't like, there's not crazy peaks and valleys with that number. It's relatively consistent.
Yeah, and I, Sean, and I think so, you hit on the point, like, this to me was an important point I think we needed to clarify, because I think, I, I don't know, I'll put it this way. I don't think it's been as clear up to this point in terms of perhaps what was either shared in the past or the understanding in the past, in terms of your point exactly, like, hey, that foundation budget could, that foundation amount could significantly change, or the reimbursement rate could significantly change. What this chart shows us, to your point, is it's actually pretty flat, and it's pretty consistent on both of those. So there may be some unknowns when it comes to students and services, but there really aren't a lot of unknowns otherwise, when it comes to, to these two elements. So, yeah. So I think that's an important point that was something that I got out of this. So, okay. Moving forward, everyone's reasonably okay? Great.
Can you please review Circuit Breaker receipts and expenditures from 15 to 22? Are there any discrepancies from, between the district receipts and expenditures and the DESI end-of-year reports available online? John?
So this is chart D, I'm sorry, table D. It's labeled Circuit Breaker revenue. So there are two timing issues related to fiscal years 18, 19, and 20. Fiscal year 18's payment of 244 to 18 was not received until 7 to 18, which is fiscal year 19. Also, fiscal year 2019's supplemental of payment, supplemental payment of 6,897 was not received until March 9 of 20, which is fiscal year 20. So when we report Circuit Breaker state revenue, the district must account for the revenue on a modified accrual basis. Again, without everyone's eyes glazing over, we start talking about accounting terms. But again, as stated in the Uniform Massachusetts Accounting System Manual, on page 163, for UMass Account, UMAS is where, is Uniform Massachusetts Accounting System Manual, for UMAS accounting purposes, special revenue funds are reported using a UMAS modified accrual basis, meaning that revenues are recorded on a cash basis during the fiscal year, and year-ending adjusting entries for certain transactions may be recorded in accordance with the Director's Annual Year-end Guidance to Accountants and Auditors. And that's the Director of Accounts they're talking about there. The Director of Accounts puts out a year-end update of, you know, what you can and can't do. So the Circuit Breaker revenues for fiscal year 18 and 19 were properly posted on a cash basis in the, in the ledger when the amounts were received by the district. Again, on, moving to table E, Circuit Breaker expenditures, the second part of that question, well, are there any discrepancies? So, in fiscal, what I did was I went back into what I have for records for the end-of-the-year reports, from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 21. I went to the report, I added up the Circuit Breaker column. So in the column that says Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, that's what's in the accounting system. What was reported on the end-of-the-year report is in that column, and a variance, if any, is, is stated there. So, and it looks like in fiscal year 14 and 18 and 19, that the amount charged to the Circuit Breaker account was not listed as a Circuit Breaker expense on the DESI end-of-the-year form. I, you are going to ask me why? I don't know. I haven't gone back to fiscal year 14 and tried to figure out why. But it's likely those expenses were, were put on the end-of-the-year report in the general fund expenditure column and not in the Circuit Breaker column. So those are the, again, I don't know why, if you're going to ask that question, I haven't researched 2014, 18, or 19.
Okay. So this really, this kind of circles back to some of the questions we had earlier around, there are some timing issues, and I know you and I talked a little bit on this one at one point where, you know, we, we have to, on our books, we have to account for when the funds actually come in. It can't be, even though they may have meant, meant for a prior fiscal year, it's when we get it. It's a cash-in, booked.
Again, right by the book.
Yep. Okay. Questions? Randy?
Just for fiscal year 22, you have 860, but you, you have another two payments of 860, 186 coming, correct?
I'm talking about chart F? Yes.
Chart D.
Chart, sorry, D is in Delta, Randy. You're talking about D, fiscal year 2022, the amounts that have been provided from DESI.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. So it, it'd actually be like closer to 1.7 million, not?
Do I think he's presenting this as of 14? You're saying the expectation for the remainder of the year should be another 860, 186. Yes? So we all now saying the same thing?
Yeah. I think it's, it's actually guaranteed, not just an expectation.
Correct. Yep.
Just a quick, how is this money actually given? Do you, do you guys get a paper check or is it direct to the-
We get a wire from the state.
A wire?
A wire.
Electronic wire?
I'm sorry?
Like an electric-
Electronic wire, yes.
Just going back to like 18, and 630 and 71 fell on a Saturday and Sunday that year. So does this happen every time? If, if the, it doesn't fall in banking hours, would you get a?
Every once in a while, every few years, there is a discrepancy between one year and another. Yes.
All right. And, and just one other quick question, and I don't know if this is actually Mrs. Forbes or if it's a CMR, but, because I had noticed that, and it's very explainable. I think this is the CMR that, that there actually is a, a way to remedy this for the previous fiscal year.
What are you referring to? Sorry?
Sorry, Randy. Yeah. What, remedy, remedy what? And what CMR are you talking about?
Hold on one second. I lost it here.
And if it's not related to this question, I'm going to ask you kind of hold it.
Well, it, it is related directly to, I guess, 18 and 19. Hold on, I got to find the CMR.
Remedying the timing issue, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know it's in here.
You want to just pop back up when you find it, Randy?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. We'll be here. We're not going anywhere. All right, we're on number six, I think.
Yep. So Jeff, what was the first budget you and your team prepared? Fiscal 20. I was the superintendent through fiscal 19, but my first budget was fiscal 20. Question seven, multipart. Can you please walk through what budget expenses and what was utilized from Circuit Breaker from FY 20 going forward? I can tell you, in FY 20, the past business manager, through past practice, she put 450,000 from Circuit Breaker into the budget. In FY 21, I believe we ended up with 700,000, and FY 22, ended up with 600,000 moving into the revenue source of, of, of the general budget. Can you please share your thinking for how you developed the estimated expenses? Lauren kind of went through how we developed estimated expenses through tuition costs, which she gets, transportation costs, which she gets, contracted services, and any, she looks at, at what those expenses are going to be and how they go forward. And that's, that's how we budget for special education, those expenses. Can you spare, share specific thinking for 22? I want to go back to 21 a little bit. 21 was really difficult as far as preparing the FY 21 budget. We started the budget in February, but prior to, everybody knows, we started in, in 19, talking about the assessment, the regionalization, the potentially deregionalization from the district, statutory versus agreement method, which we ended up working through and coming up with, with, with a, with a, an alternative or a compromise. When we presented the budget in February, we had an idea of what we were going to be doing, and we presented the budget. As we all know, COVID hit in March, and we went out of school. Services were stopped for special education for buses and still paid for. And there was a great unknown as we were moving forward with special education. If, I were a freshman committee, and I don't know if people in town knew, DESI was recommending, or saying to us that there was a potential cut in chapter 70 up to 20%. We actually had a conversation with the association at one point during a school committee meeting about potentially taking a zero if there was a 20% hit. People were doom and gloom in the state. Educationally, people were talking about compensatory services moving forward when school started and what that would look like. If you all remember, we didn't know what school was going to look like in September of 21, or September of 20. After we passed the budget in July, thankfully from both communities coming together and passing the budget, we prepared three options for opening of school, a full in-person, a hybrid, and, and we developed a remote program based upon, upon what parents wanted. Words like ESER weren't out there yet. ESER 1 was, but there wasn't ESER 2 or ESER 3, and nobody knew about CARES Act. So when we presented the FY 21 budget as it was, we were pretty conservative as far as what we were using for, for Circuit Breaker. That being said, we ended up with an abundance at the end of the year, not knowing. But I just want to be clear, it was a very difficult time to understand how we were going to budget, and even to the point of when we developed our remote program for students, we didn't know if we were going to get reimbursed for that at all. Our, my thought process when we developed that, that we were going to have to pay for that through E and D, which we didn't have a whole lot of money in at that point. So there was a lot of unknown. So if, if people are concerned about how much we had, that's the reason why. Coming into FY 22, John talked to Lauren a little bit about how we would do it, again, going back to, to past practice, and again, not knowing what FY 22 was going to look like for those students coming back from hybrid. We talked a lot about learning loss last year. We talked about social emotional issues. We talked about kids, from my out-of-district person, saying through the pandemic, more parents were asking for residential placements. And in fact, there was a Whitman family on the news at one point waiting for a placement because they couldn't get in. There was a lot of unknowns in special education. That's how we budgeted FY 22. John, Tuffy, if you want to share year-to-date expenses for FY 22, budget assumptions and compare it to year-to-date expenses. And then John Stamper is going to talk about a proposal, what I'm going to propose to the school committee, looking forward for FY 23.
Not, not to dwell on it, but certainly sped is one of those areas where it's, it is in, in many ways unpredictable because we need to be responsive. People who have an IEP have an absolute right to receive those services. And frankly, I always, I always viewed the issues that we have with sped for school superintendent to be much like the issues of snow and ice for the highway superintendent. When it snows, you have to, you have to clear the roads, and if you run out of money, you have to, you have to do it anyway. And then you wind up going to town for it. If you're the school superintendent and you wind up with, with an IEP that has to be met, well, you need to find a way to fund it, and that's where the surplus in, in Circuit Breaker is, is often used. I looked quickly at what we've seen this year. We have 12 students that have had significant changes in their, in their I, in, in their budget, in what we need to pay for their services. One, two, three, four, five of them are positive variances totaling $288,000. thousand dollars. We had a student that returned from a placement. We had some students that moved out and they were collaborative placements, and so we did not have to continue to pay those. On the other hand, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven students, they were all existing students of ours that had significant changes in their needs. That totaled six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, so we are three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, if you will, to the, to the, to the bad. That's money that, that we would look to the surplus in circuit breaker to pay because those are services that we have to, we have to meet.
So John, if you want to do, table F and kind of propose to the committee what your thinking is.
So hang on one second, just to clarify, because I want to make sure I understand this. So when we look at the FY twenty-twenty-two budget?
Correct.
And there's, there's a variance among twelve students that have resulted in a net unanticipated expense of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars?
Correct.
To this point?
At this point in time.
Okay.
The year, the year's not over, and what will happen, gosh, I don't know whether we will see increased at cost because we have some students that because of certain, because of their needs, we need to find a more expensive placement for them, they have different services that are required, or people who, who wind up having less services because they're moving back into the, into the general population. I mean, those are.
Okay. It's interesting that we've had almost as many students that have had less services as we've had that have acquired services.
Well, when we have the move, when we have the students that come back, that happens early on in the year. As the year goes on, we're now dealing with the population in the building, and that population doesn't always do what we thought they would do when we put together about eighteen months ago.
Okay. John?
And then just, so the one, the chart, I'm sorry, the table labeled F, circuit breaker, FY twenty-twenty-two was just to help in the discussion with Mr. Simonak and Mr. Tuffy earlier. So the initial thinking, now the proposal that I brought before the budget subcommittee for the FY twenty-three budget is to determine the total sped costs in the general fund and then to remove approximately, remove approximately one point seven million dollars from that budget and show that amount as being paid by the circuit breaker in the special revenue section of a budget, another part of the budget that I'm working on and for end of the month or early next month. So for example, again, try not to glaze over with your eyes, but a hypothetical seven million dollar special education budget, we're going to have one point seven million dollars in usage, I'm sorry, one point seven million dollars as a ending balance around there again in the circuit breaker fund. So my proposal is to take that one point seven, take it away from the seven million in the general fund, so the general fund expenditure for special education under this hypothetical scenario would be five point three million dollars, and then I'll show that in another area when we talk about special revenues in the budget, that we will be having a circuit breaker usage of one point seven million dollars and a circuit breaker expenditure of one point seven million dollars. So if you're looking at just the general fund and the FY twenty-three budget to come, the line and the revenue line that usually has a number in there, it was six hundred thousand this year, seven hundred thousand in years past, that'll say zero, and the special revenue, circuit breaker revenue line will say one point seven million dollars. I don't know if, I don't know if that helps to explain it, but I tried.
To clarify, you're planning on bringing this to the budget?
Well, that's a proposal, again, the committee could say, I don't like that idea, we're going to do it the old way, or whatever, you could say whatever you'd like, but that's the proposal I'm going to be putting forward.
So, and I thought we were going to do like the proposal at the end, so now you threw me off a little bit.
Sorry, in the middle, but that's okay. So.
Oh, because it is at the end as well.
Yeah, no, 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 I know. I think that, when you say there's a seven million dollar budget for special education, and I'm only going to speak for myself, like that's what my question, like, so what's comprising that? What assumptions are we making? What does that look like? That, there's a big piece of, we're kind of skipping again to the end, of like the transparency to make sure everyone understands what's going on and the assumptions that are being made, before we kind of get to like the policy decision of like this is what.
Sure, okay, I understand.
But that's my.
So when I, when I say, that would be what Lauren gives us in that whole, all those line items under sped.
Mm-hmm.
And John would take one point seven and adjust those line items, so the amount spent in special education hypothetically is five point three.
Okay.
In the general.
And it's from, in the general fund. And that's again, now aligning or giving this committee more opportunity to make a decision on how much circuit breaker is going instead of just a recommendation from the administration.
Okay. Questions for the committee? John?
First of all, I'm a hundred percent behind Mr. Stanbrook's proposal for the amount to use. I think that's a very safe number to use. It covers the amount that we need to spend next year in, by the state regulation, and I think it will show a substantial relief to the towns. The question's going to be that, you know, I think you're going to have to discuss, is that this year we use six hundred thousand, next year we're using one point seven million, a difference of one point one million in the budget, and what do we do with that? Because it's coming out of the budget, okay, and it's a relief to the towns. So thinking about what the best way to utilize that, you know, there are several ways to do it, you know, but I'm not going to suggest anything now, I think, but that has to be considered. Getting back to Mr. Tuffy and the three forty-five additional that we've incurred, the good news is, is that this year we have to spend an additional six hundred and forty thousand dollars to get to that threshold that we have to spend. So we have that money to cover that, plus another three hundred thousand or so. So I think that's important to realize that we still have, we have three hundred thousand that's in the budget that's gonna come out when we move the cir, when we remove the circuit breaker. So, you know, does that get used for covering the deficit that we already have? Does that get used for, what will that get used for? Another thing I think the school committee needs to discuss at some point going forward, so.
Okay. Thank you, John. Yeah.
And this is through you, but to everybody. I, we're hearing like relief to towns and things like this, and I think it's important that we all understand, I understand that coming from as citizens, selectmen, we, you know, have different priorities, we'll say, but as a member of the school committee, my priority is providing services to students in Whitman and Hanson. I understand, I've only been on the committee, this is my second year, so I understand that there is a lot to unpack with budgets. I think in John's proposal for using circuit breaker, the way that I see that is allowing more funds to provide opportunities and services for our students that we don't have. We don't have full-day K, free tuition free, we don't have robust related arts programs, K to eight, we have a very patchwork foreign language program at the high school. These are things that when our students are competing with other students in surrounding communities, because whether people want to hear it or not, that's the reality, I work in a neighboring community in a high school, we need to keep that in mind. I have not heard, and I, and I'm not saying this to slight anyone, I've not heard anyone raising concerns about our students in these communities, and that is concerning to me because that's what, at least those of us on the committee, in my opinion, and again, I'm sorry if I'm speaking for others, I think that's what we need to focus on. You know, and I may have, that may be the sunshiny view, but that is my view. I've been in, this is my third year teaching, in a pandemic, I can tell you that there are things that students need, that we don't have, that we're going to need, that utilizing circuit breaker funds the proper way is going to allow us to free up money in our budget to assist the students for the things they're going to need. And I think that, however this turns out tonight, that needs to be the thing that we are keeping in the forefront of our minds here. So, you know, not everybody has the same resources, and we need to keep that in mind when we have the students at the public school that we are servicing here, so.
So, I think, yeah, I think again, just to kind of keep us on scope, right? So tonight, tonight's meeting is, so I appreciate your comments, and I know John shared some comments, so I'm trying to give latitude, you know, this doesn't need to be a rigid, you can't share, but at the same time, we will have ample opportunities to discuss the budget, what's in there, what isn't in there.
Every second.
And, yeah, every second. That is going to come. Tonight, we're really trying to hone in on the process related to circuit breaker, what was done, and ultimately what we need to do. So if we can kind of just keep it close to there, please.
What I would say is, I appreciate everything you said, but it, it makes me wonder if you have a full understanding of what we're actually talking about when we're saying relief to the towns and what he plans on doing. You don't get less money. I hope you understand, it's the, when we go back to the comment of this is sum net zero, it is to the school district, it's not to the town. Your budget does not decrease by him using the one point seven million dollars of circuit breaker money. What it actually does is enables the towns to possibly give more if voted, because what you're doing is you're allocating the reimbursement in the proper manner, you're accounting for it properly. And I am a hundred percent behind what you just said, John, and I actually think we wasted a lot of time talking about how this fluctuates, you know, it goes up, it goes down. If there's one thing the previous business manager did right, is she, that person took the guesswork out of the circuit breaker question. What you did is you went back and you just used the previous year's allotment. So next year, when John is saying one point seven million dollars, that's this year's allotment, he's putting it to next year's budget. So you've taken out the guesswork in this, and that way, you know you can offset, we're going to use X amount of dollars, we offset the cost, you're now presenting a more accurate budget to the towns, I believe. And that's been my thing, where I've had a problem with this all along, is by not doing it right, you're actually hurting yourself. You're actually depriving yourselves of money for services.
Potentially.
Yep.
Right?
By no means am I going to advocate for a cut in the budget. So what you've done, by you, if you do that, and I will stand up here tonight and say, I'm not going to advocate to cut the school's budget this budget season, you freed up another one point seven million dollars for those services you just.
I understand how it works, thank you.
Yeah, it didn't sound like that.
I guess, I guess you and I just have different versions of what the word would be.
It didn't sound like it during your.
No, I, I understand how it works, thank you.
So, yeah, so I think, let's try and, let's try and leave it in a reasonably good place, right?
Well, I, you know, Chris, I do think the money you use and how you do it is entirely up to this board, but if you develop a practice, and I actually think that previous person had a pretty good practice of taking the guesswork out of the circuit breaker piece by using the previous year's allotment.
Yeah.
Now, if you do it right, you free up money, that's all I'm saying.
No, and it's fine. And I know, Randy, look, I know we're spending a lot of time here, to your point, there are elements that I think you've spent time on and understand that maybe others don't, and so the charge that I have and we have is to make sure that everyone's questions are addressed and we are spending the time. So I know this has taken a while, but if someone is going to take the time to raise a concern or raise a question, then I'm going to try and make sure we take the time to address it, so, as best as we can, so.
I make just one quick point.
Yes, please.
If we used that practice last year, what would the assessment have been different to Whitman and Hanson? That's important, the answer to that question is important because it's pretty significant, right? We're talking about a lot of money here, you know what I mean? So the change in that practice did hold a lot of weight financially. So it is, it is, this is a serious conversation.
But to my, I'm sorry, to my point, I, should the assessments have changed? Because if the assessments hadn't changed, then that money can go to other services for the students.
I'm with you, but as long as it's.
That's all, that's all I was trying to be the point of.
I feel.
Okay. I think there are various points that people are making, and I'm not, listening to everyone, I'm not sure where that's.
Could you actually give a quick, rough estimate to that?
Yes.
If we use last year's.
Did we have a question on that or not?
Yeah, we did.
I tried to answer it, I'm not really sure where.
Where is it? I thought I remembered a question of what was.
It seemed like the rule of thumb was you'd simply go back to the previous year and implement that much money into the current, you know, the proposed fiscal year.
Yeah, that's the last one.
I just thought there was a question that we said, had we done it differently?
I don't think so.
No, there is a question for that, yes.
So John did it.
There is?
But I don't know if I'm answering, when we get to it, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Do you have an answer to the question? Just go for it now.
Okay, well, it's, it's the one that says G operating budget, was my attempt at seeing, again, I'm hearing your question now, I'm not sure if that, if either of these things answered it, but anyway, I'll go through this real quickly. So what I did was, and again, when, when the question was asked at the previous meeting, I'm, you know, I'm saying to myself, okay, what, what would have happened if we had done it in twenty-two? I'm doing it in my head as the question's being asked on the floor, and this is what, the first group is what I was thinking in my head, and that's why I gave the response of a net zero effect on the budget. So if you look at fiscal year twenty-two general fund revenue budget as voted, it was fifty-six million, seven ninety-seven, five seventy-nine, forty, that's that column there, and that was a breakdown of where, the lines that were in it. As proposed, what would have changed is where it says transfer from circuit breaker, that would have said zero instead of six hundred thousand.
No, sorry, I maybe didn't ask the question.
But what I'm doing is I'm going, I'm explaining what I did.
Using the old rule of thumb, like you're using the one point seven million dollars for next year.
Okay.
That's because we know we're getting that back this year.
I'm trying to talk about what I did, and then maybe we could go to your question of what, what the, what the real question was. Everyone's looking at this and I'm trying to explain.
Yeah, maybe let, so Sean, don't go anywhere, but I think you're answering the question of had we applied the six hundred thousand, both sides of the general fund.
If, yes, I, that's what, again.
Which may be different than you're going to ask, so sit tight for one second.
So on the, on the other side, the expenses side says as voted, again, fifty-six million with those are the functions, there would have been a six hundred thousand dollar decrease in the people's services line, because that's where the six hundred thousand would have been, it would have been in special education and under people's services. So down below there, the effect of the change in the revenue would have been a six hundred thousand dollar decrease, the effect of the change of expenditures would have been a six hundred thousand dollar decrease, so there'd be no net gain or loss to the budget. And again, that's what, the question that was asked, I thought that was where we were going with it, not having it beforehand, not being able to research it. So on the, on the second part, I, after, you know, thinking about it more and talking with others, what I broke down here was what if the circuit breaker was, amount that was in the budget was not there and was taken out? So, and I started that from fiscal year fourteen to fiscal year twenty-two, if, and this is just a breakdown of what it is, it ends up being the formula is, what would be the increase to the towns, at least I, so it would be whatever the usage of the circuit breaker is, whatever the dollar amount is, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, times the overall percentage of the budget. Because what I was thinking was you were asking, or someone was asking, that when you say that I want a three point five percent increase on the budget, it's three point five percent increase on a larger number than whether, on a number where it would not have the circuit breaker in it. So you're getting three percent on a larger pie every year, or five percent, or whatever the percentage was for the year, and that increase over, if the circuit breaker wasn't there, you wouldn't be getting that amount. So again, that was my second attempt at trying to get at this question, and the formula of figuring out what the amount is would be the amount of money in the circuit breaker that times whatever the overall percentage of the budget was. So down below there, if you say, I hypothetically use three percent, I don't know what fiscal year fourteen's increase was, I didn't, I can't find the book, so, and I, so I picked three percent, that would have been an increase to the budget of fifteen thousand if it had not been there. So that's kind of, that line down the bottom is my approximation of what the increase in budget. Now, I think what you were saying is that's not, neither of those questions were what you were asking, so.
I appreciate the explanation, but my question was a little bit different.
So, but yeah, and hang on one second. So does everyone understand, so I think what John was attempting to do here was share the answer for had we done it for the regulator, for the regulation, right, and not transferred the money from the general fund, looking at it from the towns' perspective, if they were just saying, hey, we're going to give you a three percent increase, our budget would have been lower because we're pulling those monies out. So that's really what he was attempting to answer here. Everyone's reasonably okay? Okay. Sean, you have a different question that's somewhat related, I hope?
All right. I do think it's kind of important because it does speak to the weight of, I think, the amount of money involved. You chose the one point seven million dollars to add to fiscal year twenty-three because we're getting that reimbursement in. reimbursement in fiscal year '22.
Sure.
So we know that now, the 1.7 million dollars. If you simply used that process last year, so instead of the 600,000 you put in as revenue, you put in the 1.3 million dollars as revenue, what's the difference to the town of Whitman or the town of Hanson? It's not $20,000 or $30,000. It's like $400,000 difference in the actual assessment last year. You see what I mean? So.
Yes.
If that rule of thumb was implemented last year, the way it had been implemented in the past, then the difference, the literal difference to town of Whitman would have been like $400,000. So it, the choices that we're making here do hold weight, you know? So we want to be careful about what we're doing.
Agreed. Understood.
Okay, then.
Okay, so where are we? Number eight, I think?
Yep. Can you please share what information was shared, if any, with the school committee from FY '20 pertaining to circuit breaker balance estimated receipts? So we're calling, going back through notes. I just remember Chris, the the former business manager, putting in a number, talking about revenues after we presented the budget. And again, that was the year that finances were difficult, so we talked a lot about revenues, what was underfunded, what was not. I don't think she shared with the committee how she was doing it. I don't recall that. I don't know if you recall that, if you recall that. I don't recall those meetings. I don't think they actually happened about what she shared with expenses. I don't think it was clear. I just know she gave you a number. I know we talked about a number. That's what we presented in our revenue sheet, and then that's what was approved. John has a way that we are talking now going forward that we'd like to do, that we already started, but if you want to expand on that.
Sure, so every month I, when I come and talk about the monthly budget update, I I give you the what's going on as revenue and expenses in the general fund. Under the revenue portion, that's under circuit breaker, the transfer from.
And I'm sorry to do this, but so I think the question here was what was shared? So if the answer is not much, is that?
The question was not much? Yeah, I said, I think I said that.
Yep. So then, I I think the pause there for me is, as a committee, and I think now we, I think we're all gonna get to this place, is we really need to have a clear understa, all stakeholders, the committee and all stakeholders, need to have a clear understanding, right, of all these components? What is the balance? What's coming in? What are we applying? What transfers are being done, right? So.
Correct.
But that's a big, that's a really important piece. The fact that that hasn't happened.
Well, that happened, it didn't happen in '20. In '21, we did a presentation at school committee in May. I talked about what circuit breaker was and how much was going in, and and that was in May of 2020 for the FY '21 budget.
But in that conversation, Jeff, was it clearly articulated what the anticipated amount of reimbursement was? Like this, we're not, we didn't have the same level of detail then that I think we have now.
No, we we didn't have the same level of detail.
And and so that, to me, like, this is the spirit of this question is this, we don't need all of this detail, but we need a lot of this relevant detail, right? The, that's, because it goes right to Sean's point, right? So if if we're, if we don't have the understanding, then it's hard to even create a policy or understand the policy we should be following, because we don't even know what's being changed. So I I was hoping that's kind of what we would cover in this question. If you want to kind of say what we're doing going forward, can we kind of hold the going forward until we get to the last?
Sure.
Piece? Because we're we're then really not asking questions. We're kind of going to like, this is what we're gonna do going forward. Is that, is that all right?
Yeah, so that question is there.
Yes.
And like I said, we need to do better. We didn't, we didn't do it.
Agreed.
Can I add?
Yeah.
Comment to that. I'm looking online, and I know that prior to you coming on board, Jeff, Ruth would have her budget book, and it is online. It's 88 pages.
Yep.
I've looked through it many times, and I'll be honest, there's not much there about circuit breaker either. So when we talk about what was done, and in the regulations changed in 2004, when the circuit breaker really was invented, that expense reimbursement piece, so I think, right, who started in 2004 and what was their best practice in the district? I think we need to almost go back that far and see like, well, whatever those guidelines came out, you know, whatever Whitman and Hanson was doing at that time, clearly it just sort of flowed through. And then I remember, Jeff, when you came on board as superintendent, you presented your budget, and I can almost hear it, because I remember being a parent sitting in the audience, and you brought 10 pages, and you said, you know, I was really asked to give a summary. You know, that budget book was really intense, 88 pages, it was a lot to digest. So you, I I really feel that there was some influence to almost give less information. So I really kind of want to mention that in in respect to you, Jeff, that, you know, I don't know where that may have come from, but it's, I'm really appreciative of these reports now, today, but I can see, I know what happened in the past. And and I watched a lot of school committee meetings, and there was not a lot of information given, and I don't know why or, but clearly there was some influence somewhere, so.
There is. And and so I don't, I don't disagree with your comment, I guess, and we have the benefit of hindsight now, but when I, you know, when I look at the regulations and guidance that exist that have been in place for a long time preceding Jeff, going back, to me, that doesn't excuse, like, we can go back to, we should have had this in, I wasn't on the committee, the committee should have had this in 2004.
Yeah.
Because this is all relevant information. It's not, it it creates this dynamic with the towns that is unnecessary, because they should understand, like, we, there shouldn't be.
That's what I think to spoil last year, you know?
We have a very, we have a very clear discussion when it comes to E and D. The towns know exactly what's in E and D. They know what's being applied to the budget. They know the certification. Everyone is clear. Circuit breaker up to this point, right, has been, well, I don't really think anyone really understood, and that's one of the things we gotta get through tonight going forward, like, it's gotta be clear to us, it's gotta be clear to the towns. They, everyone has to have an understanding of what it is. So I hear your point. Yes, Jeff, it hasn't been done correctly under your watch, but it hasn't been done correctly for a long time as well. But that doesn't make it okay. Like, there's regulatory guidance, you know, going back well before Jeff, 2010, there's a clear budget book that says, this is how you should build the budget. These are, so we've, we've got to clean this up. We just can't, otherwise, we're just, we're gonna spend three, four hours doing this instead of talking about the stuff that she wants to talk about pertaining to students, which.
Education.
I think we all want to talk about. But we can't even get there if we're not doing things the right way. So, all right, sorry, now I'm the one that needs to be reined back in. Hillary, elbow me.
You, you don't want John to talk about.
Can we hold the future? Can we hold the future? So I think when we get to the very last question, it gets to.
Yes.
What does the administration want to do going forward? So if you can give us a holistic.
So you add that piece to the end?
Mm-hmm. That would be awesome. All right. Um, I think we answered question nine. I think that was what John presented when Sean Kane was there.
Yes.
Okay.
And I understand his question as well.
Yeah, it's a different question and a good point.
Number 10?
10, yes.
Can you share, can you share how to plan avoiding?
I think we've kind of covered this.
I think we did, right?
Is everyone clear on?
We covered that? Okay. Number 11, do you want to read?
11, I'm just gonna say it's in the packets. We alluded to this. I'm not gonna read it. It's available to the public. This is, you can see MAC is kind of all over the place in terms of, there wasn't a lot of substance, but just, we did ask the question. We asked the question, what do you see as best practices? You have the answers. 12?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Although the questions are here, uh, are related to this question. Does Masbo have any guidance?
We can ask.
Yeah, we can ask, Fred. I didn't even think of Masbo. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't even think of Masbo.
We can do that, Fred. Yep, thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
Number 12, from what Lauren and I saw, it says, please review what impact, if any, there's been to special ed services. We always provide special ed services to kids. We, I I don't think there's been any issues of of decrease in service because of the way we've utilized funds. Everybody gets as much service as in, as they're entitled to under their IP. Number 13?
Sean, do you still, how many of the, did we answer any of your questions up to this point, or you want to go through them? You want us to go through them?
Your questions were 13, 14, and 15.
Just for 13, it's one that I've been wrestling with that.
Which one? Sorry, Sean.
13?
I'm a 13.
Yep.
Lucky 13, yeah. It's one that I've been wrestling with is simply, it seems to me that last year's budget was miscalculated. And and I believe that that's the case, because we talked about putting $600,000 into the budget for revenue, but we did talk about how we're gonna withhold some money for rainy day type stuff. That was discussed. And and to me, the way the regulation reads is you're supposed to subtract the amount of money that you anticipate from a circuit breaker reimbursement. You know what I mean? So if you thought $800,000 and you put in $600,000, because you're gonna hold back $200,000, that was some, something like that was the rationale, right? But I don't think it should have been done that way. I think to be done appropriately, it would have been, we're gonna put $800,000 as a revenue, and Whitman and Hanson, we're gonna put $200,000 of that money away in a rainy day fund. So we're, we're gonna use $600,000 to offset expenditures, but 200, $200,000 in like, whether it's just leaving in the account or an E and D or a stabilization. You know what I mean? Meaning you would declare $800,000, and then that would be subtracted from the the assessments, both Whitman and Hanson. You would spend $600,000 that you declared as revenue, and the 200,000 that you wanted to put in the rainy day fund, you put in the rainy day fund. See what I mean? That's not what we did. We put $600,000 as revenue, and then, I I suppose, and then when you put the claims in at the end of the year, they were much more than 600, and then what was left over simply went into this, the circuit breaker account. You see what I mean?
It's kind, I think the part I get tripped up, and you and I have talked about this, is the whole, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with what we've talked about in terms of carrying, using the previous amount as the amount to go forward, like, or the expected reimbursement as the amount on the go forward, but I don't, I don't see that as a requirement, right? I don't see you have to use that amount. Again, I'm in favor of what was discussed, but I don't see anything that says, if you think you're gonna get 1.7 in 2023, you gotta apply that in 2022. It says you may, you may, you may hold up to that one of your bounds. So that's where I get tripped up, Sean. And I don't know if that's where you're going with this precisely or not. I might not understand your, your question.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not quite sure, um.
Maybe you're asking something different. Sorry, it's been a long night. You guys, are you guys clear on that?
I've, I don't know, I just simply feel like it was stated last year that we were gonna withhold some money to put in a rainy day.
600,000, right?
It was, we put 600,000 into the revenue source of the.
600,000 dollars into the, into the, the budget as revenue.
Right, yes.
But with the understanding that we're gonna withhold some money because of things like movements and stuff like that.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. So presumably then you anticipated more than $600,000. If you anticipated more than $600,000, then you only put $600,000 into the budget as was presented, and then the assessments were miscalculated. That's what I mean. Whereas if you, if you estimated conservatively $800,000, then you would, you would have put $800,000 into the budget, but then taken 200 out and put it into stabilization, or taken 200 out.
We don't have stabilization, right?
No, I I apologize. Then you would have simply stated to the towns, although it's in the assessment, although it's in the budget calculation as $800,000, we're gonna agree to only use 600, and we're gonna keep 200 aside, or something like that.
Yeah, sorry, Sean, I'm not, but maybe, Chris, you can, you help here.
No, I'm just going back to, I, I think I agree with you, Sean, that it was miscalculated, or or maybe that's not the right term, but we, the process clearly stated in the regulation wasn't followed in terms of taking the revenue out of the budget before the towns get their assessment, right?
Yes.
That, to me, is the error. I don't understand what you're saying, but I, I, I recognize that the, the regulation wasn't followed.
I follow that. I, I think the accounting issue is critical to recognize. But I'm saying, as the budget was voted last year, it was voted with the understanding that we're getting $600,000 back in circuit breaker reimbursement. But the way that we had discussed it was, we're actually, we're getting more money, we're presumably expecting more money because we're gonna put some money into a rainy day fund. But that money we were gonna put in a rainy day fund was never calculated in the budget as it was voted on by.
So I don't know if the budget was presented with the expected reimbursement was 600,000. I think the budget was presented as that was what was gonna be allocated. And then, again, I think this is where the clarity was missing. I don't think there was clarity on, it wasn't gonna be 600,000, it was, I don't have the number in front of me, but it was gonna be, you know, 1.0.
1.3.
1.3. That's the part to me that we should have had that conversation, the towns should have been aware of that, everyone should have been clear on.
1.1.3 was FY '22, looking forward, using John's number of 1.7 for FY '23.
Right.
So you're correct.
So I don't see the issue of, I don't think that, I don't think it was ever presented to the, I don't think it was presented to us or the towns as we're only getting $600,000 in reimbursement. I don't think we talked about the actual expected reimbursement. Okay?
So go ahead, John.
If, if I could, my, my recollection is, we talked about using $600,000 as in to offset the assessments.
Right.
Um, if you will, an estimate of of revenues is what that section is. It's really not voted any more than you vote the revenues at a town budget. You know, we estimate what we will get in interest, but we can't guarantee that. It sort of depends on what interest rates do. We said we intended to use $600,000 to offset assessments. We did not articulate, we did not talk about the, the extra amount that we have, but I'm sure that when we talked about using the $600,000, we said that was not all of the money that was available, but it was, but we felt comfortable using it. it. And I'd sort of remind the committee and, and the people listening, at the time, we were very confused as to what the revenues were going to be for the district and how do we end the year. I mean, we were, at that point in time, we were waiting for a million plus dollars to come back from the, from Plymouth County through the towns as part of the CARES Act. And frankly, with, until Department of Revenue changed fiscal reporting, we would have ended the year with negative E and D, not positive E and D. And we were somewhat unsure as to what the future looked like. Now, by the time we get to April, May, the world starts to look different and we start to hear about some other grant programs, dependent upon who wins a presidential election. And so we were conservative. Now, I also think that, that over the last two years, so ever since we had a large change in administration here in this building, we've been dealing with an awful lot of, of not in-person meetings, trying to, to do business in Zoom calls. We've gotten much better at it than we, when we first started, but I think a lot of this discussion, the sort of give and take that happens at a, at a meeting like this, didn't happen because of, of COVID. So sort of a lot of things, a lot of things contributed to it, but, but specifically, we did not articulate what we expected to have at the end of the year, but I think it was clear that we expected that we were not going to drain all of the, all of the circuit breaker money by using six, by committing to six hundred thousand dollars.
Maybe I'll just clarify my point one more time and then I'll, I'll be done. I remember it was clarified, it was discussed that six hundred thousand would be used, but we want to be conservative for rainy day reasons.
Yes.
Meaning we anticipated more money than we were getting in the six hundred thousand because in case rainy day reasons come up, move-in and all that kind of stuff. So when you look on the way that the, the budget was calculated on the, on the website, you look through like the, specifically on the chart, it says subtract six hundred thousand dollars for circuit breaker reimbursement, but that I just feel like it's somewhat misleading when it was voted on because wasn't, that wasn't the total that we were expecting. That's all.
So if, my personal opinion, absolutely misleading. Um, I'm not sure it means the budget was invalid or, you, so, and I think that's the key, like going forward, we can't have this ambiguity. It can't be, well, we're putting six hundred thousand in, but I think we've established tonight, there's, there's clarity around, we already talked about it, right? We know what the foundations amounts are, we know what the reimbursement rate is going to be, we know how many students we, we, we should have a very clear picture of all of this. It shouldn't, to me, one of the, my takeaways is there's a lot less uncertainty here and I appreciate the administration's, I respect their point with things happening with students, but there's a lot more, there's a lot less uncertainty here. I have a lot less uncertainty with a lot of these pieces than maybe I did in private, higher budget sessions. I think there's a lot, you know, I, I just, I don't see, you know, we're not going to get 50%. We're not, we, we know how many students are in, there is, there should be clarity. I think the administration and, and brief conversations, I think these guys are trying to do the best they can in terms of planning for some of those things. What I said to them is just build it in the budget. If you, if you think that that's going to happen, then you need to build it in that special education expense line. It can't be, well, we're not going to put it in, we're going to keep some money over here, if that happens, we're going to use that money. No, because now we're not all on the same page. Build the assumptions. If this is what you think is going to happen based upon past history and what you think, then that's, that's got to be the number. It's, it's, it's got to be the number. We can put the assumptions aside and have it in a little document that if, if, if they're wrong despite their best efforts and guesses, okay, but we can go right back to the document and understand what changed and why. So some of that stuff should help, Sean. So I agree, like, if your point is we could have done it better, I, I'm not sure anyone's going to disagree with you.
Thank you.
Did, did you have any, the other, your other two questions, were they answered or not? I'm not really sure.
It seems like they were answered, honestly.
Can I just?
Thank you.
I think I'm in the same, I have the same opinion. Do you get the feeling that we're not trying to answer your question? Because to me, I don't really.
No, no, I think you guys have been thorough. I, I guess for me, like when I'm thinking about a negotiation, a deal, an agreement, a budget, you're, you're assuming people are agreeing under the appropriate assumptions. I just think people agreed on the budget last year under false assumptions, which to me speaks to like, not a truthful budget, not a, not a, a miscalculation. That's why I put the, that's why I put it in there. If you wanted to withhold some money for a special ed rainy day fund, it should have been in the budget and subtracted in that line. It wasn't and it was voted on, therefore to me, that doesn't sit right.
I don't agree, I don't disagree with anything you just said.
Yeah, I think that's what you just said, right? Yeah.
I don't know. I, I, I don't disagree with anything.
No, I don't either, Sean.
There's, we could have been more transparent and everyone could have been clearer and if that helps the towns feel.
Well, I, I guess maybe to be direct, an agreement on that would, would mean we go back and rethink last year's budget because it wasn't appropriately agreed upon. To, to not agree with that, to not agree with that means, ah, we could have done it better and we'll move forward and we'll do it better next time. So for me, I think it should at least be discussed whether last year's budget was appropriately calculated, agreed upon by all parties involved in a way that was forthcoming and truthful. Yeah, that's, I guess that's my direct point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know where to go with there.
Yeah, I, I don't either. I mean, we, we've acknowledged it, right? And we've, 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 John brought it to our attention, that's going to change in the future. What, what is, what are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we potentially look back at last year's budget and reconsider the way it was done, you know, because.
To what extent? What are you proposing?
The way that people renegotiate agreements, you know what I mean? Because it's, just as what Hillary was saying, Hillary, I was in this room years ago talking about how to increase budgets. I stood up many times and talked about how we could increase the budget. I do want to do it the right way and it's important that the people, the major parties involved feel like we're doing it the right way.
Of course.
And last year, even with the, the accounting issue surfaced, which I really appreciate that we're discussing that, if you look at the way that last year's budget was discussed and, and agreed upon, six hundred thousand dollars to be spent, a certain amount of money that was not disclosed to be put away for rainy day fund, then it, it was understood then that there was more money coming back in, in circuit breaker funds. So if that was the case, then more money should have come off of the, off of the, off of the budget.
Right. So we agree it was done incorrectly.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm just wanting to know where you're going.
I, I feel like when mistakes are made, there are, there are, there are ways to correct them moving forward, but there can also be potentially ways to correct them looking back. So I ask the committee to at least consider that.
Consider what?
Looking back at last year's budget and considering whether it needs to be corrected.
So, so let's leave, we could leave that as a takeaway. I, I don't know if there's a way to retroactively go back to a previous year's budget and.
That's what I'm trying to think through, Sean.
A year after the.
I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you.
I think what we can do best is be able to learn from the experience and if mistakes were made, we learn from them and we vow so that they'll never be made again.
Well, there'll be other mistakes in the future.
Hold on, let him finish, Chris. Let him finish. Go ahead, Fred.
Uh, the one thing perhaps looking forward, I'd like to bring to the committee for us to discuss is to establish and perhaps fund a special ed stabilization fund.
Okay. We have that as a take, I have that as a takeaway. It's number two on my list after the DLS.
I'm sorry.
From John. But absolutely, Fred, no, and I appreciate, I appreciate the comment. Fair point. Um, yes.
Okay, so I'm Kathleen O'Tina. Uh, I'm a member of the Whitman Finance Committee and I'm the liaison to the school department. And I first of all, want to thank you for putting together this two and a half hour meeting. Uh, for all the years that I've been attending meetings, I've been looking forward to the, this level of discussion of how money is appropriated and how money is spent. And although I'm sure we're all exhausted, I think it's, it's a refreshing approach to informing the public how money is spent. Um, I spent a great deal of time speaking with John Tuffey over the last two years and I appreciated him coming out of retirement and giving me as a finance committee member a sense of confidence that someone who had a financial background was taking care of the money. I acknowledge John's statement that we were meeting last year by Zoom meetings. If you're not meeting face to face, you can't really have the exchange of ideas over a video screen that, that you can in person. So I want to personally thank you, Chris, as the chairman, for suggesting the creation of the budget subcommittee, which I think brought this issue to, to its awareness. I want to thank John Stanbrook for taking over John Tuffey's job, having the background, the financial background to look through these very difficult budget issues. This is not a simple, the school budget is not a simple budget and we have like fifty six million dollars that we're talking about that then all sorts of things are subtracted out before the assessments are assigned. We've never had this level of discussion. So my bottom line, not to prolong it, is thank you for having this meeting. I agree that we have had problems in the past and we won't revisit what all those problems are, but committee members put in an awful lot of time to do the right thing by the children and by the towns, and I believe that we have the right people committed to the school committee and to the towns going forward who will do the right thing. I think it's important that people, members of the public, Randy and John and Sean, have spent, spent the time to look at the budget since it's important to have oversight. But then we turn it back over to you as the professionals, because I am a finance committee member, I am not a business manager, I don't want to calculate the budget, but I want to have the budget explained to me in a way that I can then support. So at the end of the day, all I want to say is thank you to all of you who are on serving as the school committee members and thank you to the administration for the incredible amount of hours you've put in to not just dealing with the budget, but educating children in an incredibly difficult period of time because as with Hillary, she and I are colleagues at the same school and teaching in COVID is exhausting. And, um, teaching at COVID with a budget that supports us to the extent that's available is incredibly important. So thank you all for the work that you've done. Thank you to the three men, men who have spent the time investigating this issue so that there is no sense of people not being transparent. I think it's been transparent, it's just been a tough time and hopefully we will be meeting in person forever. We won't be going back to Zoom meetings, which are totally useless, and we won't have to spend another two and a half hours discussing this. I think you've done an incredible job addressing the questions in an open and a forthright manner. So thank you.
So I know there wasn't really a question there, but we do. We do appreciate the comments. Somebody's going to give you a hard time for not cutting you off.
See you in March.
Um, thank you. And you know, and look, just as a quick aside, we'll do it now rather than, the people that are spending time on this, I genuinely believe there are people here tonight that are interested in trying to help us move forward.
Yes.
So we just have to keep finding that common ground, okay? So I appreciate just as much as you appreciate what we're doing, we appreciate the time you're all spending. I mean, it's terrible outside, so there's not really much else to do, but still approaching three hours on circuit breaker on a, on a, on a Wednesday night. So I think there are some other questions here, but I'm not sure we need to go into them in, in explicit detail. I, so, because I'm going to try and move us to, I think moving forward, because I, my sentiment is we're, we've got to kind of move this forward. So question 16, I think there's a, a question here that really is, you know, some of these issues that we've identified, they just haven't been picked up in audits, which is of concern, right? So whether it's DESI, whether it's, um, financial, you know, some of these things, we can't, it's not about putting the blame on them, but clearly there are third-party partners that probably could have helped us along with some of these issues. The fact they didn't, they didn't. Um, I would ask the committee to consider, as we move forward, we probably should talk about the fact that we have used CLA for a number of years and we may want to, not necessarily even just because of this reason, but we may want to consider just a different set of eyes. That's just kind of been my best practice in my professional life is you go through that process with an auditor, they get comfortable, sometimes it's good to change every so often. So if everyone's okay with that, we can put that on a, on a subsequent agenda to talk about before that engagement comes up. So I think the only question, John, is if we were going to look at someone other than CLA, when would you need to know that?
As soon as possible.
Okay. So we, we should, all right, so that'll, that'll be coming up on an agenda for discussion and I, I, I think, can you think, think about that as well?
Usually they get rollings, they do some things around the end of the fiscal year, April, May, June. So, you know, it's not tomorrow, but certainly not by, you know, we need to know by the start of the fiscal year.
Okay. Um, we have the treasurer's job function again, I would ask everyone to look at that. So I think we can put those two items, um, on our next agenda. Jeff, kind of talk about CLA and treasurer functions again, because there are some requirements that.
Do you want that for two?
Overlast, we can probably do that on this Wednesday. We're going to be here next Wednesday. So with that said, I hesitate to ask this question, but are there any other kind of general open questions? Otherwise, I'd kind of like to hear the administration's thoughts on moving forward and the committee's thoughts on moving forward, at least preliminarily. So any other questions from anyone else here? Oh, thank you so much.
John, go ahead. We didn't mean to cut you off before.
So where, yeah, where, I guess, where do you, where, where are you thinking we want to go?
Initial thoughts, go ahead, John. So I, I give a spreadsheet. Um, every, again, I'm creating these documents where they haven't existed before. So as I, as I get rolling, um, you know, there'll be more and more things coming out, but it takes time. They, I, I don't have them canned somewhere and just change things. It's, you know, it's, I start them from scratch with the numbers that I, I'm presented with. So, um, so going forwards, uh, there, there's going to be a monthly report that. I'm sorry.
A little louder.
Okay.
You can take your mask off.
I can.
Yell.
Thank God.
Soft spoken, John.
So going forward, if you, the, in the last school committee meeting in November, uh, was it November, when did I, whenever, no, whenever we had our last meeting, um, I had a, uh, I gave out a, a monthly report, I give out a monthly report every, every month, but I also gave out a, an update of what every fund balance was. And I'm not sure whether the, the school committee had ever seen that before. I think Mr. Boyce had said that he, perhaps he hadn't. So, um, again, the cir- circuit breaker is not a general fund thing, circuit breaker is a special revenue fund. It's not in the, in the, in the 22, 25 page budget at all. It's off, you know, it's, it's not off books, but it's not on that report, it's on another report. Um, so going forward, um, um, every quarter, I'm going to give an update of what's in those, those, every single fund other than the general fund. And I gave a November one, even though it's not a quarter. Uh, next week I'll give a December one and I'll go through it in depth of every fund, including the circuit breaker. And if anyone has any questions, they'll see the, they'll see the balance. Have any questions, you bring it forward and I'll, if I know the answer, I'll answer it. If I don't, I'll get the answer. Um, and I think on a monthly basis, just the, just the balance of every fund with a quarterly analysis of what I see might be happening or any discussion questions that might come up, um, well, I think that will work to, to, you know, kind of bring it to light and see what, what's going on. I, and, and again, on the, as you can see in, for fiscal year 22, what I've done each quarter is I transfer about a quarter of the required amount every quarter. Again, it's not exact because I'm not splitting an invoice. I'm actually, you know, someone's, a student's invoice is a dollar amount and I'm keeping that on there. So it's as close as possible, but every quarter, I'm transferring circuit breaker eligible expenses instead of waiting until June 30th and transferring all the expenses. I'm, I'm transferring a quarter of the required amount every, uh, every quarter with the idea that the last quarter will be the amount that's required or any extra that comes up, uh, over the course of the year. So, um, if you look at the charts, whatever B, C, D, whatever the, um, one was that had the update, um, of where we are, it was something like eight hundred and sixty thousand for circuit, circuit breaker revenue and something like six hundred thousand or so in, in expenses. That six hundred thousand was, um, you know, two quarters worth of, of transfers. Um, so I mean, I'm, I'm open to anything else that you think might be useful, anyone that, you know, again, it's a zero sum problem with me unfortunately. Every minute I spend on this is a minute I can't do something else. I, I like to think I can multitask, but there's a limit to the amount of work. So, um, if I'm open to any other suggestions that would bring things, eliminate things better.
Yeah, hang on one second, Fred, I, because I want to give Jeff kind of an opportunity to either recap and or anything additional there before we.
So the only other thing is, you know, as, as John proposed, the one point seven circuit breaker rollover for FY23, I just want the committee to be aware that that's going to be your choice because you still have the option legally to hold money. And we, we will be as transparent and as clear as what our expectations are. I heard what Mr. Howard said as far as if, if we're, the preference would be to spend the one seven and front load the budget. I don't know if that, you know, say, we, we might have and put it in, in, in a line item of the budget, um, for unexpected expenses, uh, so it's more clear. We can do that. I, I, I appreciate what John has done. He gives me more documents than I've ever seen, uh, which is great and we will share them with the committee. Uh, I, I, I want to go back to, you know, I think this Dela Martinez says accountability and I don't think we did things right. I don't, I don't think I did things right with this folks. I don't think Dr. Whitner did things right with, with her. I don't know if Dr. McEwen did or not. I, I didn't know Dr. McEwen, but I think we could do better. I think we need to do better. I think our communication with both communities has to be better. And I, I, I hope that we can move forward, at least Ms. Green and Mr. Heineman are here. I think I can have great dialogue with them. I look forward to our, our FinCon meeting, um, going in, in March, but I think John's plan is well thought out and, and his level of detail to give to people is, is something we've never had in this district and, and I, I, I think it's very good for us.
Okay. Committee members have anything to add that they want to do at this point? I know there's a lot of information, so Steve, we'll probably just go on. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I've said it before and I, I really appreciated everything that John Stanbrook has brought to us and shared with us and, and we have, have had those discussions. John Tuffey was also mentioning about, um, and it's something similar that I mentioned at our last meeting with regards to Pilgrim Area Collaborative. I had said that enrollment was down for this year so far and it almost made it sound like, you know, we weren't doing anything, but I was, and I apologized, but John was saying something similar, you know, it's the services that have kind of taken over. Yes, there are kids in classes, there are kids at Pilgrim Academy, there are kids at Summerside or whatever the other schools are, uh, where Sean is, you know, that, they're all there, but there's services around everything have just blown right up. I know Lauren knows this really well. I've told you before in the past, my oldest niece, who's not only now married, has a house, but is expecting in May, she, that works for Kennedy Donovan, um, she's seen services, she's always in placements and so forth, but she's seen services. And I was well undermining, um, what we do at Pilgrim Area Collaborative, and I think John was alluding to that too. So those are expenses that you, of course, they're all a part of that, but it, it just gets so huge. Well, go back two, two years, 2020, when we had Jeff first full year and then we turned up the heat on him because COVID came along and the whole assessment issue came along and everything else. Um, and, and we're putting him through that for two and a half years. Um, it's, after a while, people boil out. I mean, you just, I had to have a conversation about the new job that I'm, I'm tasked with of doing, working on the 1950 U.S. Census. As much computer stuff as I know and as much as I can build online ticketing websites As much computer stuff as I know and as much as I can build online ticketing websites for presidential libraries, I was dragging my heels with this. I was almost like at the end of my wits in what I could do. And I think we really have to be very mindful of that, that we compact a lot of things into people and have a lot of expectations. And no one is on any intention to hurt anyone. I'm glad that we've heard that, and especially from Kathleen and welcome back, but you and others that, you know, have given us rise to saying, we are doing a damn good job. You know, President Kennedy would be proud of all of you. He told you to do something for your country and not just think of yourself, and you've already done that and more. So this is just a few things, you know, that kind of highlight in my brain. Yeah, it is getting older. It's going to be another year older this month. After, after George's birthday, though, not before. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Don, I got Don, Chris, and then you, Fred.
Yeah, I just wanted to remember when we hear things about relief to the towns and so forth, where our spending is at the bottom. We still have a long way to go. Our students have a lot of needs. We certainly have money in circuit breaker, so we, you know, should use that, use it wisely. And remember that it is one-time money. It may come back, you know, as we begin to look at this closely, but be careful how we spend it. So I would just, you know, want to make sure that we always are thoughtful about that and putting our students first. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Don. Chris, and then Fred.
Yeah, so just speaking for myself, I've always been about trying to make things better, whatever we can do to make the whole, you know, district better. And you guys have given us an opportunity to get better by bringing this to light and educating me through all the questions and, and the process of going through it. And I, I think that's a, that's a healthy dynamic, right? So I appreciate that. My biggest thing is, yeah, as long as we're civil and work together, we can get through anything, right? And mistakes happen, you know, and that's just that, you know what I mean? I, I think we're, this is a healthy process, and I'm, I'm, I appreciate everybody, you know, being involved.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Fred?
John, getting back to your suggestions for you, the financial reports that you give us at our monthly meeting, as well as the, what you want to do quarterly, perhaps we could set up on our website a business manager's report cap. And all the financial data can be in there for the townspeople and local officials, you know, that want to access it. So they have the same information that we have and they can access it. That would be one thing I'd like to see. The other thing is, you know, myself, I believe I should be held accountable for, you know, the occurrences. I don't recall any great discussions, and this went, you know, over my head, and that for that I can take accountability and I apologize.
Thank you, Fred. No, and look, we all have accountability. So I think accountability means you, you take it, you own up to it. You don't make excuses. You don't rationalize, and you truly take it to heart and then avoid it from happening again. So hopefully, we can do that. To your first point, so one of the things we agreed in the Budget Subcommittee, Fred, is when we get those budget reports, we will post them. So we actually were able to, because we weren't able to meet as a Budget Subcommittee last, before the last School Committee, we did post John Stanbrook's financial reports, and they will be posted going forward. So we can clarify the exact spot at the next School Committee meeting. Maybe, John, you could just make sure everyone's clear. But Fred, yeah. So multiple great minds think alike. I think we've all come to the conclusion, the more we can share those reports, not only with the committee but with the public. I know at least one person here has already looked at them on the website, you know, the, the better off we are. So, good. Anyone else? Okay, I know it's been a long night, so thank you, everyone, for spending the time. I think for next School Committee meeting, we do probably need to start to think about clarity in terms of, are we voting any type of policy decisions? And then we do need to talk about audit firm and/or treasurer function as well. Those are, and then we have a handful of open items that I think we can also address. So with that all being said. Yeah. Second, anyone?
Second.
All right, and we got to do a roll call vote, sorry. Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris Howard, yes. I'm not going to ask the Johns. Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Oh, you're still there. Excellent. And Michelle?
Good night, Mike.
I'm not sure if Michelle's still there. All right, we'll count Michelle as abstaining. I didn't get anything from Michelle. Oh, no, Michelle's there. Even better. Thank you all. Thank you all. So, all right, we're adjourned. Thank you.